This is the December 9th, 2025, a regular meeting. The Santa Barbara City Council would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with original justice and moral.
Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Harmon.
Here.
Councilmember Santamarin.
Here.
Councilmember Sneddon.
Here.
Mayor Pretend Friedman.
Here.
Councilmember Gutierrez.
President.
Councilmember Jordan.
Here.
And Mayor Rouse.
Here.
All right, very good. With that, Madam Administrator, are there any changes to the agenda?
Thank you, Mayor. There are no changes to the agenda today.
Thank you. And, Madam Clerk, you have some items to read on the consent calendar.
Yes, I do. Item one, amendment to the Clean Water State Revolving Fund installment sale agreement for the El Estero Water Resource Center Electrical Distribution Renewal Project Ordinance, Adoption and Agreement. Recommendation, the council adopt by reading of title only and ordinance of the council of the city of Santa Barbara approving an amendment to the installation sale agreement with the state Water Resources Control Board for the El Estero Water Resource Center Electrical Distribution Renewal Project, project number 8508-110. Item two, agreement and allocation for California Local Housing Trust Fund Grant Program Award, Ordinance Introduction Resolution Agreement. Recommendation, the council introduce and subsequently adopt by reading of title only and ordinance of the council of the city of Santa Barbara approving and authorizing the city administrator to execute the state of California Department of General Services standard agreement with the Department of Housing and Community Development for the local housing trust fund grant program commencing upon the effective date of the enabling ordinance. B, introduce and subsequently adopt by reading of title only and ordinance of the council of the city of Santa Barbara approving a loan agreement with the housing authority of the city of Santa Barbara in the amount of $1,945,176 for development of real property located at 15 South Hope Avenue to be used for permanent affordable housing to be secured by a deed of trust and a 90-year affordability control covenant imposed on real property and authorizing the city administrator to execute such agreements subject to approval as deformed by city attorney and rescinding ordinance number 6106174 and adopt by reading of title only a resolution of the council of the city of Santa Barbara amending resolution number 25066, adopting the budget for fiscal year 2026 to approve an increase in revenue appropriations in the local housing trust fund in the amount of $1,42,476.77 and approve an increase in expenditure appropriations in the local housing trust fund in the amount of $1,945,176. Item three, 2026 through 27, Police Management Association Bargaining Unit Memorandum of Understanding Resolution Agreement. Recommendation, the council A, adopt by reading of title only a resolution of the council of the city of Santa Barbara adopting the 2026-27 Memorandum of Understanding between the Santa Barbara and the city of Santa Barbara and the Santa Barbara Police Management Association and B, adopt by reading of title only a resolution of the council of the city of Santa Barbara amending resolution number 25130, the Position and Salary Control Resolution for fiscal year 26, factoring the salaries of certain classifications in the Police Management Association effective January 10th, 2026. Item four, selection of provider for referral-based navigation center services at 621 Toppol Street, Resolution Agreement. Recommendation, that council C, adopt by reading of title only a resolution of the council of the city of Santa Barbara amending resolution number 25066, adopting the budget for fiscal year 2026 to approve an allocation in fiscal year 2026 expenditure appropriations in the flexible housing fund in the amount of $250,000 to fund an agreement for referral-based navigation center services at 621 Toppol Street. Item five, a statement of investment policy and delegation of investment authority for fiscal year 2026, Resolution. Recommendation, the council adopt by reading of title only a resolution of the council of the city of Santa Barbara adopting the investment policy for the city and rescinding resolution number 24076. And number eight, the consent public hearing. Amendments to the zoning ordinance related to the definition of historic resources, PLN 2025-00050, Ordinance Introduction. Recommendation, that council A, determine that zoning ordinance amendments related to historic resources are consistent with the general plan. B, determine that the zoning ordinance amendments related to historic resources are exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, pursuant to SEQA Guidelines, Section 15305, minor alterations in land use limitations. And C, introduce and subsequently adopt by reading of title only and ordinance of the council of the city of Santa Barbara amending sections number 30.57.030, 30.157.025, 30.157.050, 37.157.0, I'm sorry, 37.157.110, 37.157.170, 30.220.020, and 30.300.080 of the Santa Barbara Municipal Code pertaining to protection of historic resources.
Okay, then. Thank you very much. With that, I already have a request to pull item four for public comment. Are there any other items that council wishes to pull for discussion or separate vote? Very good. Do I have any, I'm sorry, item four?
Oh, sorry. Yes.
Okay. Madam Clerk, are there any requests online for pulling item for public comment?
We have no hands raised.
Okay, very good. And with that, I will entertain a motion with everything absent items four and items eight, because item eight is a separate public hearing, for approval.
Submove.
Move by Friedman.
Second.
Seconded by Gutierrez. May we have the vote, please?
Yeah, excuse me. Yes, this is a motion by Mayor Pretend Friedman, seconded by Councilmember Gutierrez, for the consent calendar other than items four and eight. Please go ahead and vote.
Pastor Janus, thank you very much. And with that, we'll take on item eight. You've already read that into the record. May I have a, I've opened the public hearing, number one, for that. Number two, may I have a motion for item eight?
Submove.
Moved by Friedman. Seconded by Sneddon. May we have the vote on item eight, please?
Very good. This is a motion by Mayor Pretend Friedman, seconded by Councilmember Sneddon, for the staff recommendation for item eight. Please go ahead and vote.
Pastor Janus, thank you very much. Okay, with that, we'll go to a report from the Finance Committee. Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm just going to take a little longer than normally on this, but not too long.
You, really?
Yeah. So, this is, this item was heard today at Finance. It was also item five on the consent calendar. And I just want to highlight a couple of things, because there's been a lot of talk in the community, from the media and columnists in the public, about the city's financial issues. And this example today at the Finance Committee is we did approve, and just forwarded up to council, which approved is the statement of investment policy. But there's a couple of things with that came up in today's hearing, and I would encourage those who are interested in city finance to go back and watch it, and it was about our investments. And I want to point out a couple of things that our Finance Department has done that are really looking at our budget, and it was part of that presentation, and it's why we passed what we did today. The first is that we have hired management firms for two things. One is our investment portfolio, and the other is for our Section 115 trust, which the council created two years ago, almost two years to the day. And what happened with that trust is because we spent that one-time money, or invested that one-time money, we put about $2 million in, and that created $447,000 in additional money that's going towards city pensions. So, by not spending it at that time, two years ago, we have created a half a million dollars in value towards the city. And then, in addition, our investment portfolio, we hired an asset manager, and it has outperformed anything we were doing previously. And so, the cost for the asset manager is paying for itself and then some, and we're getting a higher rate of returns than we otherwise would have gotten, that is going back into city departments. And one thing, just as an example, is when we bonded the police station, we took all that money that we got now, and instead of just having it sit there, our asset manager has invested that money until we start paying out the, for the contractor for the police station. And that interest that we're earning right now is paying for the interest on the bonds, and it's come up even higher, and it's going back into unanticipated costs. So, I just wanted to put that out there, that our finance staff is doing an outstanding job, and that was part of this item that came today to council, and we are doing things other than raising taxes, because we're not going to be able to solve our budget challenges by raising taxes. We have to look at, be strategic. And for those who want more information, go back and watch the Finance Committee hearing. It was in-depth, but those are just some of the things that we're doing, and wanted to highlight those while I had the time. Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, move on to general public comment. General public comment is three minutes at the dais for anything that is not on today's agenda, but still falls within the scope of this body. And with that, we'll start out with David Crockett Williams. He has three minutes at the dais, sir, and he'll be followed by Dean Noble and Bruce Giffen.
Today is the 27th anniversary of the death of Masao Nipasi, my first peace walk teacher. He came to Santa Barbara as a Buddhist monk in 1976. Reverend Nipasi's teacher was the most venerable Nichidatsu Fujii, whom Mahatma Gandhi called his Fuji Guruji. Nipasi had just walked across the United States on the peace walk from Los Angeles to DC, drumming the prayer of Namumyo Ho Rengekiyo. From him, I also took up this prayer drumming on December 8th, the traditional anniversary of the Buddha's enlightenment, but as a devout East Satiya Sai Baba, the Sai Buddha avatar. That flagged a, on June 14th, 1976, I received a fire sign from God. To die, our chemist lab coats red towards fulfilling the hopi prophecy for the true peace with harmony among all life and free natural abundance as paradise on earth. After our trip to the hopi land that summer, we met Masao Nipasi. His name in Japanese means warrior of the rainbow, the same book, the same name of the book about the hopi prophecy. I told him Masao sounds like the hopi word for the great spirit, Masao. That inspired me after my four years' experience at Walt Disney Studios to produce a popular peace walk reality TV show to share this great love peace message of the true Dharma to unite the nations in tranquility. A preview is now on Facebook with many videos, the Buddhist monks now walking the Walk for Peace from Texas to Washington DC, arriving on Lincoln's birthday, February 12th, and my earlier video on YouTube called Rainbow Uprising of Consciousness Campaign. Who's going to offer me the first million dollars to produce the American Peace March at the White House? That's my question. Please see my details in my email to you all of December 7th. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Dean Noble and Bruce Giffen.
Hello, everybody. Dean Noble, Executive Director at Ealing's Park. I'm here with longtime board member and indefatigable do-gooder Bruce Giffen. We produced a children's book about the park called Bobcat's Tale. Bruce and I co-wrote it, and we got a former Disney Imagineer to illustrate it. It's about Jerry Harwin as our hero, and how he finds a sick bobcat and decides that he wants to take the trash dump that's up on the mesa and turn it into a park so he can re-release the cat. On the day following the big public meeting, the families and kids followed Jerry and Puff into City Hall to wait to speak to the mayor. Shall I keep going? Jerry stepped up to the podium and told the mayor all about the plans for the park. We could build hiking trails and playing fields and safe places for kids and animals. Well, I wish I could, said the mayor, but it's a no. The city just doesn't have the money. Puff wasn't paying one bit of attention to the mayor, skidding around across the floor as a mouse. Puff's pale tail twitched. He pounced. Who's he going to land on, kid? Puff landed smack on the mayor's nose. They gazed into each other's eyes. The mayor began to smile. How can I say no to this face, said the mayor. Jerry, the city will let you and everyone in town have the land for $1 a year, but you're going to have to raise the money yourself to fund the park. Many people contributed to the making of this special place. Kids and parents and neighbors went to work to build the best park in America. Jerry and his friends started cleaning up the canyon, planting trees, building fields, making trails, and restoring Habitat for Puff and her animal friends. Jerry's dream of creating a park came true. It took a long time, and finally, the Las Pecitas Canyon became home to Ealing's Park. The kids have grown up and families have families of their own. The whole town continues to enjoy the park. Much of the 230 acres is still wild. Humans and animals play and live side by side, just as Jerry had hoped. And if you look really closely and quietly when you're visiting Ealing's Park, you just might see one of Puff's great grand cups around the next to you. Now, yes, we do have bobcats in our neighborhood. Books are available at Chaucer's and also at Tecolote. We have four along with an accompanying plush. Is city council allowed to accept those, or is that against the, okay, we'll leave them over here, and if you need more, let us know. Coming next year, more Shakespeare, more music, more summer camps. We've about tripled the size of our summer camp program. We're going to have two weeks of mountain bike camp next summer. See you at Ealing's Park.
So, Mr. Noble, is there a theme of intimidation and violence against the mayor in order to promote, promote you what you want to do?
No, but if you look closely, he appears to be about 35 or 40 years old.
I know who that mayor was. Next speaker, Jessica Washington Delabre. I never forget your last name right.
Last name was perfect. Good afternoon. My name is Jessica, and I proudly serve as the CEO of Habitat for Humanity of Southern Santa Barbara County. I come to you today with a non-agenda item to draw your attention to our recently released Housing Innovation Report. And as you all may know, we build and repair affordable, low-income ownership homes in the city of Santa Barbara and across South County. And this job is increasingly challenging, and instead of looking the other way, we said, let's get to innovation, because we see that as the path forward. So, many thanks to some of you and input from staff. We have 30 cross-sector stakeholders, ranging from elected officials to architects, who have informed in 18-month process to build this publication, Building a South Coast For All, an 18-month, oh, yes, Building a South Coast For All. So, I just wanted to make sure that we come together to read these findings, look at new and different ways to implement affordable ownership housing in this community, and also say that we are so excited, not only to recommend policy, but to put that policy in action. We are implementing the first-ever for-sale accessory dwelling unit in the city of Santa Barbara under construction now with your partnership. So, thank you for reading the report, and thank you to all of our community members who may want to partner with us around learning more and implementing some of the recommendations.
Thank you. That's it for the in-person speaker slips for general public comment. Madam Clerk, are there any online for general public comment?
No hands raised, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, with that, we will move on to the next thing, which is the poll consent, item number four, which we have some speaker slips for that. And I have a few folks that are donating their time to other speakers, so I'm going to call the speaker's name, and I'm going to also ask that the donator of time is here as well. Start out with Maureen Ellenberger and Connor Durand is donating time. Connor, are you here? Very good. Thank you. So, Ms. Ellenberger, you have four minutes.
Thank you, Randy. Thank you, Mayor. Sorry.
That works.
And I hope you're feeling better. I had surgery the same day you did.
Oh, yeah, nah.
Okay. Good afternoon, Mayor Rouse and council members. I'm here today to ask you to pause and have a real discussion about the Faro Day Center contract before approving it, understanding what this decision means for our city and for the people who depend on these services. The Day Center is currently operating well under the city's prescribed model, and while the city administration admits to making some mistakes, instead of learning from those mistakes and continuing to improve the process, we're changing providers, not because it's necessary, but in an effort of those in charge to save face after months of turmoil. And what are we getting for the change? A contract that costs $350,000 more than the SB Act proposal. It offers fewer services, lasts only one year, and stops meaningful public-private partnerships. The one-year term also speaks volumes about the administration's confidence in this decision. This is not fiscal responsibility, and it's not good governance. Before signing, I also urge you to request full transparency on the selection process. How were proposals scored? Was there a documented procurement process that was actually fouled? Members of the selection committee say they were simply told the outcome. Councils should understand all of that before approving the contract. But the waste of money isn't really the biggest issue. What troubles me most is that this narrow approach ignores the crisis barreling towards us in 2026. The original vision was for a comprehensive navigation plan model with medical behavioral health support, food assistance, documentation help, and community building. Instead, we're getting a scaled-back, housing-focused center at the very moment housing support is collapsing. Rob Fredericks of the Housing Authority warns that an estimated 900 residents will lose housing vouchers with no replacements in 2026. Cuts to housing, healthcare, and food benefits will push more people to live in their vehicles in other unstable living situations. Looking forward, this plan looks like spitting into the wind. And here's what's most frustrating. We have partners ready to help. Many of us have urged collaboration, but the city is now choosing to go it alone, excluding the county experienced partners, not to mention deep-pocketed funders. SB Act has additional funding capacity from private funders that would have strengthened the program. Resources now lost. The more than 30 organizations that supported the full navigation model are sidelined, and the city's talk of an advisory group feels a little bit more like window dressing. Council members, we're not preparing for what's coming. We claim to have a plan, but we're avoiding the hard work of building a real, real strategy. By next year, and I'm serious, we could face a humanitarian disaster, not because it was inevitable, but because we choose the path of least resistance. Signing this contract doesn't solve these problems. Those 30 organizations will need to fill the gaps without city's support. I'm asking you to discuss this, ask the hard questions, and make sure this is the right thing to do before you sign on the dotted line. Why are we paying $350,000 more than what SB Act proposed for fewer services? Why are we rejecting partnership and resources? How does this limited approach prepare us for the storm we know is coming? Our unsheltered neighbors deserve more than face-saving and half-measures, and I do appreciate all of you and your leadership. Last week's meeting was amazing. I listened to it for six hours, and I am so impressed by all of you, and I really hope you can do something. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next speaker is Rich Sander, and I have Tyson Halsath donating time. Thank you. Rich, you have four minutes.
Thank you. Mayor Rouse, council members, thank you for the opportunity to speak. As you know, my name is Rich Sander. I'm the Executive Director of SB Act. Whatever you decide here today, we will work to be collaborative. But before you finalize a decision, we want to offer some clarity that we hope is helpful for not only this decision, but for how we think about homelessness systems moving forward. Over the past 16 months, our team has served more than 1,500 people. We've built steady relationships with neighbors and nearby businesses. We've built steady relationships with neighbors and nearby businesses, and those are the kind of relationships that help keep a block both safe and predictable. As you consider this transition, I want to offer a few clarifications. One is cost. Some of the framing shared ahead of today's meeting subtracted a $96,000 case management contract from only one proposal, but that position would be replaced in either model since both proposals include built-in case management. When the two proposals are compared on equal terms, the city would actually spend over $320,000 more with the recommended option. That's not a criticism, it's just an apples-to-apples clarification, because every dollar matters in this work. I'm especially proud of our Ambassador Workforce Development Program, employing 11 individuals with lived experience. They know the clients, they know the rhythm of this block, and they are trained and prepared to de-escalate situations before they escalate. With this operational change, we're going to have to end this workforce development program and lay off 11 ambassadors in early January. Losing those relationships overnight will be felt not only by clients, but by the neighborhood businesses. One of Faro's closest neighbors shared with us in writing this month that disturbances have decreased significantly, communication has improved, and staff responsiveness has strengthened. But there's also the broader system. Faro has shifted to appointment-only, and PATH's operating model is changing. And this is happening just as more residents are losing Medi-Cal, SNAP benefits have ended, food insecurity is rising, and first-time homelessness is increasing. Please hear this. The city will be investing more dollars into homelessness than ever before, while total services will be fewer than they were a year ago. That has real consequences. Finally, I want to acknowledge the model the city originally championed. Faro was launched as a public-private partnership, a way to stretch limited dollars and bring multiple providers together. Our proposal continued that approach. What's before you today moves away from that collaborative model at a moment when community need is rising. Regardless of today's outcome, SB Act remains committed to ensuring a smooth and humane transition for clients, partners, and the neighborhood. And we will continue being part of this city's homelessness response, collaborating, coordinating, and supporting people with dignity, compassion, and accountability. Thank you so much for your time.
All right, very good. Next speaker is Joyce Berg, followed by Tara Wright.
Thank you, council members, for a listening ear. I'm on the Board of SB Act, have been a board member for seven years, and I'm a member of Christ Presbyterian Church, which is downtown on Victoria and Anacapa, and we have partnered with SB Act for eight years. Whatever you decide here today, SB Act will work collaboratively. Before you finalize a decision, I just want to call your attention to just some simple facts. SB Act has done excellent work in the past. SB Act has responded to the city's requests for changes, and SB Act is currently doing excellent work. I believe they should continue to run the Faro Center, which will relieve the city of having to start all over again and work with an organization that has no experience running a day center. Thank you.
Thank you. Tara Wright, followed by Lindsay Black.
Good evening, afternoon, Mayor Rouse and members of council. I'm here as a citizen and not in my professional role at SB Act. Picture someone arriving at 621 Chapala after months, sometimes years, living outside. They walk in scared, exhausted, and searching for someone who understands. That moment when someone with lived experience can say, "Me too," can be the turning point for someone in crisis. SB Act lost by only six points, yet lived experience does not appear anywhere on the scoring rubric. This is deeply concerning, because the COC requires lived experience representation on its coordinated entry committee. If lived experience is required, why was it not valued in choosing the provider? The council agenda report does list behavioral health, mental health, and medical services under center services, but it does not include two core components: legal support and workforce development. These are not minor omissions. Legal support helps resolve warrants, documentation barriers, and house-blocking issues. Workforce development is directly tied to long-term stability. SB Act already supports legal services and workforce development, and its model provides clients with access to essential tools and its model... Oh. That help them move forward. They also partner with Sanctuary Center for Medical and Mental Health Care. SB Act's appointment-only model has significantly reduced neighborhood complaints, demonstrating that compassion and community safety can coexist. But beyond the numbers, there's a deeper responsibility. You represent the people of Santa Barbara, and the people have been unmistakably clear. The letters, the emails, the public comments, there's overwhelming support for SB Act. Financially, CityNet's proposal is more than $320,000 more than SB Act's proposal. This vote is more... It's about more than a contract. It's about client well-being, neighborhood stability, transparency, fiscal responsibility, and honoring community voice. The people of this city are asking you loudly and consistently to choose the provider they trust. I urge you to vote no on the resolution agreement for 621 Chapala Street.
Lindsay Black, followed by Beth Collins.
Mayor Rouse and honorable council members, I'm Lindsay Black, and I serve as Executive Director of the nonprofit Jody House. We reside next door to the Daytime Navigation Center, and I also live within several blocks where I'm raising my three-year-old and six-year-old sons. The implications of the center's management and practices reverberate far beyond one block of Chapala Street. This past year has been taxing for everyone involved in these discussions about the center's future, but we know the stakes are extremely high. It's been widely acknowledged that mistakes were made and lessons learned since the center's opening. Jody House has been encouraged by the RFP process because it emphasizes the critical elements of security and accountability for neighborhood relations that we felt were missing at the start of the project. As our elected officials, you take responsibility for hearing all voices in this community, and we believe this process demonstrates your commitment to that responsibility. It wasn't the easy thing to do, but it was the right thing to do. We look forward to partnering with the Navigation Center in the year ahead in a way that balances the needs of two highly vulnerable populations, both the unhoused and our community members living with disabilities who Jody House serves. Thank you for the time, energy, and thought you have put into helping us find a path forward together.
Thank you. Beth Collins, followed by Letitia Treheal.
Council members, Mayor Rouse, thank you. I'm Beth Collins from Brownstein. Thank you all for all you do for the city and for always being willing to listen. I represent SB Act and have for the almost seven months. Frankly, it's been a personally very amazing experience, supporting and helping this organization grow and improve, and getting to spend time in that center with the folks that they are serving and the ambassadors, who you just heard speak. In that time, we worked with the city to modify the sublease, the funding contract. We integrated a new conduct matrix, which frankly acknowledged behavior outside the center, not just the behavior inside the center. And, you know, all the things I'm about to list really hit the security and neighborhood relations pieces, which we were... I've been so focused on with the team. So, in our contract, we have the new conduct matrix. We have patrols. You're gonna hear from Landon. He patrols the neighborhood with our security. We have an upgraded securities firm that's included in our proposal of $270,000, and it is a premier security. They're excellent, highly-trained, mature, experienced security. The current one is a former police officer from Ventura. We have now, now, seamless communication with the city and the neighborhood. We provide weekly activity reports, urgent incident reports. These are printouts of the reports that we've provided just in the last few months, listing every single incident that happens, and we do that on a weekly basis. But then, if there's something urgent, we provide an update to the neighbors and to the city for the urgent items. We also have neighborhood improvement projects, including the Beacon Program. These have been huge, huge improvements over the last months. And frankly, they're improvements that the city collaborated with us on, and frankly, I believe rightly so, rightly so. And we're glad they're there. It provides clear outlines of how to behave and how we are to manage our operations, and the city has control over that. And even under the RFP, you have the ability to terminate if an operator, anything is going wrong for 10... Just in 10 days. So, you'll have a lot of power going forward that maybe you didn't have six, seven months ago. You're here today to decide... Oh, I thought I had three minutes, sorry.
You did.
Oh. You're trying to decide between CityNet and SB Act, what's gonna happen in the next 13 months. Changing operators is a major issue. CityNet does not have the experience that SB Act has, doesn't have all of these protections built in, and therefore, changing operators is a huge, huge risk. Why disrupt services? Why fire 11 ambassadors? Why risk bringing in a new operator, especially for only 13 months, and especially one that's gonna be twice the cost? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Letitia Treheal, followed by Landon Rank.
Mayor Rouse, council members, thank you. I'm gonna take a deep breath. My name is Leti, and I am the coordinator at the Faro Center. I want to speak from the perspective of someone who is with their clients every single day. I know their names, I know their stories, I know their jokes, I know their sadnesses. I know them. They've come to trust me, they've come to trust our team, and for our population, that is not easy. Many of them have been disappointed, ignored, or abandoned by systems for years. Over the past year, I've seen these relationships be... Are the key to making progress for our clients. Our ambassadors with lived experience walk out, walk around our neighborhood, and they notice when a client isn't doing well. That's very meaningful to us. They can step in early because they're trusted, they're deeply trusted. That's why I'm worried for in January, for our clients. When people who already struggle with abandonment don't see that our staff are there, it's gonna shake things up. Not only does it make it just nervous, it has them shut down. Many won't try again. They won't start over with someone new, because it's really vulnerable to share your story. And that's not because they don't want help, that's simply because that's how trauma works. I'm also concerned talking about our community members, our ambassador program. They are a key source of workforce development for people experiencing homelessness. So far, we've had 20 individuals use this program to build valuable work experience and transition back into the workforce. I can't name many organizations that will willingly have employed someone who they know may be on the streets. With dozens more that have begun serving as volunteers, our own clients become our volunteers. So, that's why we do the programming the way we do, with consistency, with lived experience, and with familiar faces. I say this with respect, these relationships cannot be transferred. No matter what you decide today, I want you to know that our team deeply cares about our clients, and we will continue serving them. Thank you.
Thank you, Landon Rank, followed by Roberta Cifuentes.
Mayor Rouse, members of City Council, thank you for having us. I'm Landon Rank, and I'm serving as currently the project lead for the Faro Center. I want to reemphasize that we respect whatever the council's decision may be, but also, we just want to note the time that it does take to rebuild trust. For months, I've been on that block every day, whether that's sitting outside with security staff on our stools, walking the area, talking with our neighbors, cleaning up trash and occasional feces that we come across, checking in with businesses, and building relationships with neighbors or with clients who often don't trust new faces. A big part of my job these past several months has been rebuilding the trust, which you know, and that's taken time, consistency, and communication. Early on, we had some really hard conversations with the neighbors, but over time, they... As they saw us show up day after day, those relationships have shifted. And at this point, I would say Jody House Vintage staff, Lotus Boutique staff know my face a little too well. Now, when they see something concerning, whether related to our clients or not, it'll either be me or our security guard are the first people that they're calling, and we try to respond as immediately as we're able. That responsiveness has been a foundation for restoring confidence in the Faro Center. We've also improved our communication with city staff. As Beth mentioned, we do submit these weekly reports of all of our neighborhood patrols and any activities or incidents, as well as day-of reporting for any major incidents that might occur. We filled our second binder, as Beth mentioned, we're working on our third at this point. It's also taken us time to dial in the security piece, and I think that's important to note. We've worked with several security contractors who were not the right fit, some who didn't understand trauma-informed care, some who frankly caused more issues than they solved. It took trial, error, and a lot of adjustment to really land on an approach that actually supported the clients and kept the neighborhood peaceful. So, the current rhythm didn't happen overnight. It came from learning what this particular block needs and what this community responds to. One thing that's truly anchored the center, as has been mentioned, is the presence of our 11 ambassadors. They're able to really help de-escalate situations because they've built real trust, often over many months, and that kind of stability can't be recreated quickly. So, whatever decision you make here today, I just want to emphasize, the work isn't just about only opening the doors. It's really about setting the right tone in the neighborhood, learning its patterns, understanding its vulnerabilities, and showing up consistently enough that people know who to turn to. That process takes a lot of time, honesty, and a lot of communication. So, no matter the outcome today, SB Act will work closely with city staff and partners to support a smooth transition. We need this for our clients. We continue working... We will continue working closely with CityNet throughout the city, and just please know that any transition takes a lot of time, and we'll continue doing everything we can to support safety, stability, and dignity on this block. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, good afternoon. Okay, so before you make your decisions today, I would like you to please consider three observations that I've made as a person who's out there interacting with the individuals and doing a lot of paperwork. One, it's happened to myself through Housing Authority. I am shown in the computer as a resident that I have an apartment, but I do not, and I'm still homeless. Their computer system shows me as a resident with no unit number. I am currently certifying for an apartment that I am currently not residing in. Someone is residing, or people are residing, in units that are issued to people in the computer as residents, and I don't know who's really living in these apartments, but somebody is, and the computer shows us living there, but with no unit numbers in the Housing Authority computer system. Secondly, staff at places like Dignity Moves and Rescue Mission and PATH, the reason that we don't trust them is because they constantly gaslight us or make false accusations in order to get rid of us, to pilfer our property, because we have a good eye for little treasures, thinking that we can clean it up or sell it on the internet, so they pilfer our property. I currently have had my own City College Chromebook stolen out of my suitcase from the Rescue Mission by staff, and it was returned to me by graduates from the residential side of that emergency shelter. So, there's an emergency shelter side, and there's a residential side. One of the guys who lived in the residential treatment program for a year or more and has graduated and is now still volunteering there is helping return my property that was stolen from me by staff members that currently work at the Rescue Mission, which are... Were mostly all devices, one of which I mentioned was my City College Chromebook. And thirdly, the thing I'm noticing is a lot of these new complexes that are going up, the funding is a huge amount of funding, and they're making these apartment complexes with 200 and 300 units, and only maybe 10 are going to homeless people, and that's the funding they're using to build this big old building, and they're gonna give a little 10 or five units to somebody, and the rest of the units are price-gouging units that are making these rental hikes go, giving us a rental crisis. So, that's... So that's all I got.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Are there speakers online to this item?
No raised hands, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, very good. With that, we bring it back to council for a motion and a vote and/or discussion. Ms. Sneddon.
Thank you, Mayor Rouse, and thank you to the speakers. I have a, just a quick question. First, I want to say that I think that both CityNet and SB Act have been excellent providers and partners with the city and appreciate all the work that's done on a daily basis. And with the RFP and the scoring, it also seemed to me that the numbers turned out very, very on par with each other, which is actually really reassuring that we have great partners in everything that we're doing. So I guess the question for me comes down to the cost. And so, I also have concerns about continuity of care, but I'll save that for comments. But the, just for the cost, what is the bottom line price differential, and where is that differential coming from?
Councilmember Sneddon, thank you for the opportunity to respond to questions. We wholeheartedly agree with your previous statement, which is how fortunate we are to have two long-term service provider partners in the city, both actively engaged in the Faro Center, in meeting client outcomes and supporting client needs, but also interested in pursuing this and submitting proposals. So thank you for that, and thank you for acknowledging that as well. In terms of the bottom line, so what's, has been really great about our longstanding relationship and partnership with SB Act is that they match our taxpayer contributions dollar for dollar with private dollars. They have done this for every contract that we've entered into them with, and that has gone, I will say, very well, and has benefited both the city, SB Act, brought in really great partnerships, and served the community overall. So I want to acknowledge that as a standing practice of SB Act that really sets them apart. But what we've learned in the last 18 months is that having a number of funders and donors contributing to a particular initiative set varying levels of expectation on the type of service delivery, how communication would be fielded and facilitated, and actually, we learned quite a bit and heard some feedback from funders that they were justifiably upset, that they had no knowledge or awareness that we were working with SB Act on a performance improvement plan, that there were challenges and concerns that we were fielding from the surrounding businesses. And we fully acknowledge that we should have had a better role, taken on more proactive communications, and I think in communicating with SB Act about these expectations, that really the city needs to look at how we enter into these partnerships moving forward, especially as we are tackling very complex projects like taking over the PATH Santa Barbara Shelter. So I just wanted to say that to start, but in terms of the actual numbers, SB Act's proposal for total operational cost at the center is $1,025,100. If you minus the second floor expenses, that would be $998,000. So that is just total operating cost. The contribution of the city would be $297,000, with the majority of that coming to or allocated to private security services, estimated to be $156,800 for the year. The CityNet proposal, they actually submitted a proposal that was lower cost, the evaluation committee had some feedback for them, so we exercised our right for a final and best offer with CityNet, which actually increased the cost. Part of that was more robust security provision, I think you might have seen that in some of the committee comments, as well as making sure that client needs were met, and taking into consideration that equipment and supplies would need to be purchased to replace what SB Act had contributed. So that total cost right now is $594,949. There has been discussion about the existing CityNet case management contract, which right now is just under $100,000 a year. So obviously, if CityNet were to be selected, we would fold that into the overall operating costs for a net savings to the city, whereas SB Act, we would not move forward with that case management contract because they have proposed another case management partner, Sanctuary Centers, as part of their proposal moving forward. Thank you.
Ms. Santa Maria.
Thank you, Mayor Rouse. Actually, going off of what councilmember Sneddon about the cost, I think, Barbara, you mentioned the majority of the 290-something thousand for SB Act, 156,000 of it is going to security, correct?
$156,800, yes.
Thank you. How much are we paying for the security under the CityNet contract?
$75,000 is estimated, which is on par with the Triumph Security Services that we have at the library. And again, they've done a great job, their performance is a high-performing team, and it was actually a firm that we had looked at early on for the Faro Center, and receiving multiple proposals for those services.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Jordan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Anderson, right now, we're running a current month-to-month contract, right?
Yes.
And that, as of right now, is just month-to-month until we make a change, right?
That is correct.
And today's action isn't even setting a date for when that would be, it just says you're going to, my words, go get all parties together and work on a transition process if we were to follow the recommendation.
Yes, we have communicated to both proposers that our hope is a thoughtful transition, and that the city is prepared to take as much time as we need to make sure, again, logistics are addressed and client support is as seamless as it possibly can be, again, similar to what we're doing with PATH Santa Barbara and the transition from City House.
Is there a better time of year or a worse time of year to make that transition from a client's standpoint?
There absolutely is, I will fully admit that.
So I'll just, I'm, just offer my opinion, and then you can carry on with your answer.
Sorry, I thought that was a question, I apologize.
I think we're on the same, I think we're on the same page, but I just, my presumption is the dead of winter is not the better time, and warmer weather would be a better time, right?
You are correct, yeah.
Can I, councilmember Jordan, I just wanted to also clarify, there was a comment about the 13 months remaining on the contract, that's actually the remainder that we have on the sublease, the city has for the sublease of the property. So, you know, at that point, we would also have to renegotiate the sublease with the property owner and determine how we were going to move forward. So that's for, that's why the contract is only proposed for 13 months.
I get that. And then, so I guess, tell me why you would not want to wait a couple months, and what's the, what's the cons of waiting a couple months till better weather, coming back and going through my whole page of questions, it's a real presentation, that type of thing, and talking about all the components, so you've either heard people out there talk today, or what, say we've talked about, or my questions I've sent to you. What's the fallout if you, if we just came back up to the start of the year and had it as a regular agenda item and talked about it a little more?
Councilmember Jordan, you know, we're happy to take that direction from council, and, you know, facilitate as much deliberation as we need. The hope was that it would be a full one-year contract with a service provider so that they can adequately prepare for staffing and costs, incur those costs, and be able to operate the center with enough time for us to consider what future actions could be taken. So if a new provider were to be selected, six months or seven months' time is just not enough time for us to assess. One, should we renew the lease at this current facility? Are we able to provide the level of care that's needed for our on-house population? Are we able to respond to and navigate concerns from the neighboring businesses and be able to work in a mutually supportive and respectful environment? And are we able to assess those future costs and allocate those costs as part of our regular budgeting process? So it was simply that piece. Our commitment, just like we are committed to at the PATH Emergency Shelter, is to keep operations open, to keep continuity, to make sure that we are addressing needs and inclement weather. And again, I think with the providers that we have who submitted proposers, that that is absolutely possible.
And so, I hear all that, and I agree with you, that more time to build a resume, if you're going to switch, is better when we get to the end of our lease, right? But we still don't know what will happen then either, when that happens, right? We, I mean, we have no guarantees.
No.
And have we reached out to the property owner to involve them in these dynamics, or even talk about, here's our situation, could we increase, could we extend our lease by six months under current term to get more time, if we wanted to wait around and discuss this a couple more months?
So we have been in constant communication with the property owner. When the initial complaints came in last summer, they reached out in the initial threat of litigation because the city would be required to defend the property owner in that litigation as per our sublease agreement, and so there was significant communications back and forth at that point. I think, you know, the property owner would probably be open to a conversation, but, you know, there has been a lot of communication around this issue, and a lot of concerns from the property owner's perspective. So I think that would be something we'd have to have a discussion with them about whether he'd be willing to extend the sublease any further.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Friedman.
Thank you, just a few questions. Who was on the, this is for the public, who was on the selection committee, or the review committee, I'm sorry?
Councilmember Friedman, the members of the committee have asked to remain anonymous so we can share the agencies.
Just in general, not the specific people, just the categories.
We can share the agencies that they represent. So we had five external committee members that included representation from a local health organization, local philanthropy, our county department agencies, and, and a local business association.
So, and it was, so it wasn't a majority of city?
No, and we had three city staff, of which I was not included in the evaluation and scoring, yeah.
Okay. And then, going back to the costs, it was, for the CityNet, it was 595, is that right? Or, that we would, that the city would be?
CityNet is 594.
594, and then we would be paying that. And then, the SB Act was 998, you said, and we would, the city would be paying 275, but this is the point I wanted to?
297,000.
297,000, sorry. But then there was also, can you, if you could clarify with something, you said that, that doesn't include case management, or does? I was unclear on that.
It does include case management. It's a, the city, sorry, SB Act is proposing a new case management provider, Sanctuary Centers, to be at the center instead of CityNet. So there would need to be a transition of clients between the two entities if SB Act is selected.
And that, and that, but that doesn't affect the cost, it's not driving?
No.
Okay. And then, another question in regards to the cost, was, was cost part of the scoring evaluation?
Yes, cost was part of the scoring evaluation, but it was separate from consideration of the main service proposal. So in terms of the evaluation criteria, program design and approach was 30 points, organizational experience and past performance was 20 points, and budget and cost effectiveness was 15, and the other factors go down from there.
Why was cost separated out?
So we have found through our RFP processes that the committee members are able to look at the proposals more impartially and fairly, and not considering cost. I think all of us are very conscious of making sure that we use our dollars wisely and not overspend in any way. So first, the committee scores the proposal on the other factors I've mentioned, as well as the others around neighborhood relations and performance measures and collaboration. They submit their scores to me, and then I send them the cost proposal, and then they submit the cost proposal score to me after.
Okay. And then, my last question, and this came up, I, when I, I just want to be fully transparent, I was getting, had conversations with representatives from SB Act, and, and I did follow up with Barbara to try to understand those, because they were legitimate questions, so. And in our conversations, we talked about the issue, and this is an important one, on the partnerships with the community funders, since, since they are picking up a lot of the cost, even though the cost is significantly higher with SB Act proposal, but that's not on the, on the city. One of the interesting points about when we were discussing that is what, what happens when funders, they might have their own criteria or requirements, and you mentioned something to me, and I just wanted to put it out there so everybody understands this. There could be times when funders have specific requirements for the services that they want to see that could be in conflict with city council policy directives at the time. What happened, one, has that potentially, is that, has that happened, and if it hasn't, what happens if it, what would happen if it does, if there's a conflict between a provider having conflicting policy requirements?
Councilmember Friedman, it's a great question, and, and again, I think I shared with you one of the greatest lessons we've learned over the last 18 months, truly. We are so fortunate to have the philanthropic organizations that we have in this community to be able to patch together, moving forward on these pilot programs and in new initiatives that we wouldn't be able to do as a city alone. I want to fully acknowledge that. And like I said, for the past several years, in homelessness-related initiatives, there haven't been challenges. We're, we're in lockstep, on the same page. I think as we were experiencing challenges with the Faro Center, we didn't have direct agreements with the funders that were invested. So we weren't communicating with those funders as if we were a collective group making decisions together, even though I think the funders have shared with us, we should have been, right? So, so we have, I will say, repair work to do with those funding partners, which is why the CityNet proposal doesn't assume that outside contributions would be coming in. I do think we need to structure those funding relationships differently. And I will say, you know, a few weeks ago, when we were asking for, a month ago now, I think, feedback on the RFP, we had funders still advocating for an open drop-in public access model. So we still are trying to build understanding of why we had to move in this direction, that this direction is still serving and addressing client needs. It is much of how most of our homeless-related service delivery is facilitated in the city of Santa Barbara and in the region, and that we're looking for facilities that are more appropriately located and adequately staffed to be more accessible in terms of drop-in public access. So I, I know it's a long-winded answer to your question, but I, I think it is tough to be recommending a proposal that costs more to the city, but it's because we really want to, one, acknowledge what we've learned, two, really work with these funders in a different way, collaborate differently, fund initiatives differently, and make sure that we're meeting expectations collectively for the community that we serve.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Santa Maria.
Thank you. Mayor Rouse just had a, just a couple more questions. Barbara, could you tell us where the funding is coming from for the, what is proposed today for the CityNet contract?
Councilmember Santa Maria, we are proposing Measure I flexible funds that we had allocated, and you all approved as part of the budget process, for right now. We have permanent local housing allocation dollars that will come in after the fiscal year, so we will make adjustments as necessary. I think for us, we wanted to be able to at least initiate a one-year agreement with a current allocation, but at every turn, we'll be looking and exhausting for dollars outside of general fund tax dollars when we can.
Okay. And there's about 250,000 left in that fund, is that correct?
For this fiscal year.
For this fiscal year, okay. So of course, if it's 594,000 for CityNet, of course, we're still going to be short. Where's that rest of that funding coming from?
The, in the staff report, the proposal, because the agreement would span two fiscal years, is to move into the next fiscal year, 2027, Measure I flexible fund. Again, we would come back to council as part of the budgeting process, once we have that PLHA allocation, to offset those proposed costs.
Okay, thank you. And the contract that is before us today would be for January of next year, so as early as next month, until February 2027, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And then, is there a, did I read correctly, there's a 90-day transition period?
So when we were interviewing with CityNet, we do think we can shorten that transition period, but again, depending on the decision of council today, we really want all partners to be at the table together to talk through what that plan and timeline would be, knowing that staffing and hiring would be part of that process, but also knowing that the CityNet team, one, is a tenant in the building currently. that the CityNet team, one, is a tenant in the building currently, provides current case management, has the current street outreach team that they're leveraging, the neighborhood coordinator is also someone that you know well. Um, so I, I think we can do it, and they actually communicated to us that they could do it in a shorter period of time.
Okay. Did they communicate any specifics on how much shorter of a time?
It was 60 days, I believe, is, was their answer during the interviews.
So?
But again, we're flexible on all parties, so I hate to be gray about it, but I think we acknowledge that the transition really needs to be very thoughtful.
Right. Right. That's, that's why I was asking, um, it, it might be concerning to try to rush, rush it if we, if we were trying to do it, you know, well, instead of rushed.
Exactly.
Okay. And then I think I also, or I, actually, I heard you mention just now, um, trying to find a more appropriate location for the, for the drop-ins. What, um, just from staff, what constitutes a more appropriate location? What is that based on?
Uh, that's a great question. Did you want to?
I, I think that's something we need to explore further, and I think it's a conversation more globally with our service providers and thinking about kind of how does, what, what does a drop-in center require? What does that look like? What are the needs around that? And, I mean, I think it ties into like the conclusion of this contract, what are we going to do here? The city's purchase of the PATH Shelter that will happen on next week's agenda. I think it's a, a more global conversation about sort of the continuum of care that is being provided for our unhoused population. So I think that is a, a longer-term conversation where we would like to have a lot of engagement with our stakeholders and service providers.
And Councilmember Santa Maria, if I could take a moment to acknowledge some of the public comment about city staff not thinking long-term. I, I will say a lot of what we're doing right now is thinking and anticipating long-term. So Father Virgil Cordero Center has a huge capital campaign that they're undertaking to expand their day center in a new building that I will say will triple their square footage and be able to serve more people. The Mental Wellness Center that we have downtown has an amazingly successful fellowship club. So even in identifying the location we're currently at, we are trying to provide, um, a level of service delivery in different neighborhoods to be accessible in general. So I, and this Mercy House transition for us, the city putting more dollars into that investment than we ever have before allows us to facilitate more emergency shelter referrals, which is why this navigation center needs to have the capacity to be able to facilitate those referrals. So we, we are looking at, as City Administrator McAdoo said, the entire continuum of care and the entire network of service delivery we have in the county for now and into the long term.
Okay, thank you. Just two more quick questions. Has, do we have in the city any drop-in locations? So if somebody's unhoused right now and they need to go somewhere, is there anywhere that they can just drop in?
Councilmember Santa Maria, the coordinated entry system, um, has drop-in hours at shelter locations throughout the city. So it's not every day a week, um, at, at the same hours for every organization, um, but that schedule is posted on the county website, and they're required to have these open drop-in hours where someone can walk in and be able to, um, engage in data collection input for the coordinated entry system.
How are folks informed of those drop-in hours? Like, how do people know when they can go? If, I mean, a lot of unhoused folks may not even have a phone or, or an electronic device, so.
It's a great point. Um, 211 has that information. It is something that providers, uh, outreach providers, street outreach providers share with unhoused population, but I will say that that information is not shared broadly enough, and we do need to do a better job at doing that.
Okay. And has CityNet ever operated a referral-based daytime navigation center?
So Councilmember Santa Maria, um, in terms of a daytime referral-based navigation center, not that track record particularly, um, but they have operated interim housing shelters, congregate shelter locations, navigation centers as they're attached to housing, which is ultimately our goal here, um, for many years throughout the entire state of California.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, but that, I guess that would be a no then, right? They haven't, they have not, they don't have experience with this specific model, referral-based daytime navigation?
You, you are correct. They have been onsite at the Faro Center since opening and being the only contracted case management provider, and they're also a tenant at that location, so familiarity, operations, logistics, um, and navigation center-type environments related to housing and emergency shelter, yes. So it's a long answer, but you're correct. They do not have experience with this exact operating model and this exact type of facility in the city of Santa Barbara.
Thank you. That's really helpful. My last question is just a clarification question, but I read in the staff report, uh, CityNet would serve about 20% fewer clients per month. Did I read that correctly?
So the staff report does not say that reduction. I think that was an SB Act communication. That reduction is only because CityNet can anticipate the numbers for case management only at this time. They can't anticipate the numbers for other providers in the center offering those services. Um, so I think it's a combination, the city, the SB Act number is a combination of those. Where CityNet is just specific to case management, as of right now.
Oh, I guess that's also because of the onboarding and the transitioning. It's going to result naturally in less people being served.
Yes and no. So we're able to serve more people through case management and housing navigation capacity because there will be more staff to facilitate that. We just don't know of the partners that are currently engaged with SB Act and have MOUs with SB Act to operate from the center, how many of those partners will continue service delivery if CityNet is selected to be the next provider.
Oh, that, wait, sorry.
Yeah.
Can you clarify that? Are you saying if we choose CityNet, it's going to basically put up all these contracts in the air? We won't know for sure if we're able to contract with them, or what do you mean by that?
So SB Act has done an exemplary job of working with provider agencies outside of their direct service delivery. Um, so we have, um, many agencies that come in and out, serving clients, meeting with clients. So Good Samaritan is on the second floor right now as a tenant. They come down to the first floor to meet with clients. Um, we have agencies like Public Health, a public health nurse that comes in once a month to meet with clients there once a month. Um, so we have been in conversation with some of those providers about the continuity of continuing to serve out of that environment, but those agreements haven't been established yet because CityNet hasn't been selected and wouldn't be able to negotiate those contracts.
Got it. So we don't have continuity?
That would be part of the transition plan, so that those conversations, those negotiations, that's why the longer transition period might be needed, is to do all of those negotiations.
So that would then address the difference in the numbers that you're seeing too.
I see. Okay. Do we have a transition plan ready?
We don't because we didn't know what the council decision was going to be today.
Got it. Okay. Thank you so much. Nothing further.
All right. Very good. Uh, well, for my part, I, I worked closely with Ms. Anderson, trying to get this thing started for well over a year, and to find the, the DUDAC building and whatnot. So we had a very specific idea of what we wanted, and I worked closely with both CityNet and SB Act in outreach and going around neighborhoods and whatnot, and as folks all know, how much I really am concerned about neighborhood impacts, and I do not want to be the cause or the center of a neighborhood impact. And so we spent a lot of time with the property owners on Chapala prior to the initiation of this project, assuring them that not only would this not be an impactful problem, but it might even improve the neighborhood in terms of the people that were hanging out there, because we would be a presence, and all the providers were there. It didn't really turn out that way, and there's a lot of misunderstandings, apparently, about what the scope of services would be. So I handed out a lot of my business cards, and they all got used up, trust me. And neighbors were not happy, and, uh, we had to, we, we didn't do stuff that was just precipitous from our part. We did stuff because we had to react and provide and to go forward in this new, um, by referral-only program, because it was never intended to be a meal service plan. It was never intended to be a gathering place at specific times. Uh, we've had a really, uh, tough experience over in Casique at the PATH building, which will later take over, and try to change that dynamic as well, because it's important that the neighborhood sanctity is, is preserved. We get the services, that's great, but you'll never, ever bring the public in on your side of homeless services if you ruin the neighborhood that you go into to provide those services. That's been my feeling all along, and I think that's really true. So it's incumbent upon us to make sure that when we do these services, that we're doing it as a big community and not trying to separate out one from the other and, uh, and say, well, we're going to do this in your neighborhood whether you like it or not. And so that was a really unfortunate, unfortunate turn. Uh, I still have a lot of respect for both organizations, um, but there was, uh, there were some very difficult times, and I received a lot of very difficult letters, and people didn't understand, uh, why we weren't doing hot meal services and all the things that, you know, we never intended to do in the first place. So, um, Ms. Anderson's gone through some really tough times, coming to this conclusion and going forth with what we've had to do and going for the RFP for the new operator. But I think it was the right thing to do, and I think it was the, the fair thing to do. Uh, Mr. Jordan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We're ready for comments, right?
No, you already gave your comments.
I had some questions, and then you gave some comments, sort of steering the direction, so.
Well, there's, okay.
I'm ready for some comments now without being steered.
Okay. Well, we also need to get to a motion at some point, too, if you can.
Or not.
You can have your, you go ahead. Your, your call.
So, um, I think this, to, to me clearly is not a consent item. I think, um, that it deserves a, um, a presentation, and I have a list of stuff here that, uh, because we already heard we need to get to a motion, that it would take an hour just to go through my list of stuff, which I think you probably know already, Barbara, that, um, that should just be part of the presentation. But I have, you know, uh, some of the things, I, I just, I think the timing is bad. I mean, we all, I think nobody would not agree the timing is bad. And I think, um, we're in a tough spot to do it now, and I would like to see us pause and bring back a presentation, say sometime in late January, that more fleshed out, um, how we got here, how the, what, what was part of the, what was part of the RFP? I've seen the RFP, but I have not seen the result of the RFP, and I don't need to see those, apparently. But to hear about what the results were in more detail from each side, and, and to further explain the stuff like, uh, almost the negative implication we're putting on private funding and community support versus the alternative, and why we aren't leveraging that to our advantage rather than showing that as something less, but, um, the current model that's working and, um, how that was rated with the RFPs, the security plan, shared provider model versus single provider model, um, no philanthropy requirement in the RFP, and if we score that when somebody does include that, that it's good, um, less number of clients versus more number of clients, uh, the ability of somebody who's already got a case management system with clients, and now we're going to ask them to totally change their case managers. You know, um, that's, that's what I'd like to see. Um, I, I think the fact that we're on a month and month, month to month with everything, with, with a lease, lease date late next year, or whenever that is, gives us the flexibility to stall for a month and a half or two months, and if we come to the same decision, whatever. If we make a different decision, okay with me, too. I have sat with both people on the bride's side and people on the groom's side out there. I don't know how you all got on the opposite side of the, of the pews, but you did it. And I, um, am firmly committed to both of those groups. I'm also committed to a downtown center. And just to, I'll give you my recollection, too. We definitely talked about a daily drop-in center on Chapala Street, okay? We did not talk about something that was not people congregating and going there. I get what happened to that. I know the landlord personally for 30 years, so I heard from the landlord, too. Um, and I agree, we have to find a way to, to balance that need for a facility in the downtown area and not on the outskirts of town. Uh, all due respect to out on 154 there and, and what they want to do, but the action happens downtown here, and we need, we need to figure out how to solve that. So I'm not going to support moving on today, obviously, and my suggestion would be, whether it's a motion or just a suggestion, and, um, I'll follow the, follow everybody else's comments, too, but would be that we bring this back as a full presentation item, that maybe you, uh, ask councilmembers separately what they would want to see as part of that presentation, where we were, how we got here, where do we think we're going if we kept it with the same provider, or where do we think we're going with the recommended provider, and what those key differences are, um, laid out clearly in bullet point or something. So we have a plan. Um, but that's kind of where I sit now. I just think it's, uh, I, to me, it just does not sit well to, uh, hide this in a consent, uh, item and go forward. And I'm, I'm sorry, nobody asked me that before, um, but here we are today. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Santa Maria.
Thank you, Mayor Rouse. I agree with Mr. Jordan. I think that we need to, to have a more thorough discussion on this. I, if I may suggest, I think it could even be helpful to have representatives from both of the applicants to be able to answer questions and integrate them as part of a presentation so that we can answer or get these questions answered that staff may not know. And it's totally understandable that since you're not the service providers, there's a lot of things you may not be able to answer. But if we're going to be making this type of decision, I think we just need to be working with all of the information that we have. I would be happy to make a motion and get this moving along, um, but before I do, I, I feel compelled to emphasize that what ruins a neighborhood is not a service provider, it's not a daytime navigation center. What ruins a neighborhood is decreasing services. And at a time right now, when so many other benefits and services are being cut at the federal level, and those effects are trickling down, now more than ever, we should be expanding services, we should be facilitating the accessibility of these services, and whether intentional or not, I, I don't think that it's the intention of staff to create barriers, but some of these things may be creating more barriers than we need. And so I, I would support a motion to table this and, and come back in the new year with a more flushed-out presentation and inclusion of the, um, of the applicant so that we can, we can have a more thorough discussion.
Ms. Nedden.
Thank you, Mayor Rouse. Um, I'm also in agreement with Councilmember Jordan. I think in general, I, I support the broader vision for the PATH Center, and that's not on today's agenda. And I'd love to talk about a future drop-in center, and that's not on today's agenda. And then, um, I also, no secret, had the misunderstanding that the Faro Center was to be a daytime drop-in center, so where that fits in our future plans is not on today's agenda. And these are all sort of essential pieces, and since it's next week's agenda is part of, and we're doing a very huge, maybe, and we can't talk about it yet because it's next week's agenda, but potentially, big purchase and a big holistic shift in how we're addressing this. And the daytime navigation center itself could, could be almost anywhere or might be tied to this, this particular property or not. And so, um, I think along those lines, I would love to see the, the whole picture before making this decision, um, and really because it costs more. And, um, I guess on two, on two counts on that, I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm just, again, so incredibly grateful for both of our partners. I mean, it's just what you're doing, boots on the ground in the community every day. I'm very, very grateful. So I, being financially stressed right now in the city, um, again, not on today's agenda, is I might have, um, another priority that I think is important for those Measure I flexible funds, which is also on next week's agenda. So I think just given how many things that are not on today's agenda, that can't really talk about, and if it's puzzling, it's the rent stabilization seed fund, um, I, I, I don't, I don't feel like today I, I could, but I think in the future, having the whole picture, um, could really help make that decision.
Councilmember Nedden, I just, and I just wanted to maybe have the city attorney weigh in. I, I think back to Councilmember Santa Maria's comment, I'm a little concerned about having both of the applicants come for what would appear to be an interview with the city council because that was not outlined in the RFP process. And so I think I just, I want to be true to our purchasing policies and what we laid out in the RFP as the selection process. So I don't know, Ms. Connect, if you want to weigh in on that.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, council, thank you, um, Ms. Mc- McAdoo, sorry. Um, so that's correct. It wasn't part of the RFP process. Obviously, all of the, uh, proposers can come and speak a public comment, and, you know, council could ask questions, but it'd be part of public comment for the agenda item.
Thank you for that. That wasn't actually part of my?
I know, I was just, I went back to Councilmember Santa Maria had asked for that, so I just wanted to clarify kind of what the, what the protocol, you know, from our purchasing standards and.
Thank you. And I fully support RFP process and completely understand the circumstances that we started that process under. It was necessary, um, as, as already commented on, completely necessary. And if the results of the RFP were far apart from each other, um, I might have a different comment on that, too, but they are so close to each other, and then what makes the difference then is the makes the difference, then, is the difference in cost. And while it's, I mean, it's really not that significant of a difference, but it's enough that it, because of the fund that it would be coming out of, to me, that makes the difference. So no, I completely respect the RFP process and really thank the community members and those who participated on the panels. They just came out so close to each other. So to me, those are neutralized, and then it's a matter of cost. And other considerations also. And to me, those considerations is how does the daytime navigation fit in with daytime drop-in and then our larger PATH purchase, something not on the agenda today, because maybe everything happens there. I don't know. So I'm, it's a long way of saying I'm in agreement with Councilmember Jordan.
Ms. McAdoo, I also wanted to clarify, too, in terms of next step. I'm assuming we need to go back to both proposers with the adjusted timeline and the shifts in the process to see if they actually want to continue forth with their proposal being considered, correct? Okay.
Mr. Friedman.
So I have one question. It's relevant to my comments. The property owner, so we're in a month-to-month with the property owner right now?
No, just the service provider.
But my recollection is that the property owner could, at some point, they don't have to go the full 13 months. The property owner or the city could give some type of notice. Am I mistaken on that?
Councilmember Friedman, so I was looking for the lease as we were discussing the sublease that we have with the property owner or the lease agreement. And I can't bring it up, but it's a term lease. So as far as my recollection is, they don't have, we don't have or they don't have the rights for an early termination.
Okay.
But I would want to double-check that.
I guess it's relevant to the one that comes back because my recollection is that there was a discussion about whether or not, if, based on certain things, that the property owner could, in fact, do that. But maybe my recollection's off, but I need to get clarification when this comes back. I'll just, to the last point that was made, if we want to continue it, it's, again, this is one of my frustrations with government in general, is we just delay, delay, delay on everything. And one of the things, and it came up with a few times, is it's very difficult to get staff, especially the types of positions that we're needing that are going to commit to a job that's less than a year. And if we delay this out till January, February, March, then all of a sudden, that commitment, it's only predicated as long as we have the lease with the property owner. That's why I asked that question, which would be less than a year. And it's very difficult to get these types of positions filled. And we realize that because two years ago, we switched our human services grants from one-year cycles to two. And after that two-year cycle came through, this is last fall, the feedback was that by having that two years of guaranteed funding, it helped the nonprofits go out and recruit and retain their staff more. So I'm glad that that last comment came up. We need to go back to them to see if they're even interested because I have concerns that if we delay this again, or we delay this, that we're going to have a different scenario, and we're not going to be able to have more robust discussion on the types of staffing that's available. And we're going to limit the types of individuals that would be willing to do it. So, but it seems like, I haven't heard from all my colleagues, but it seems like there's a majority to table it. So I'll just go with either, with how it goes today. It seems like that's the case.
Kevin O'Von.
Just a quick question.
Ms. Sanria.
Thank you, Mayor Rouse. If we table the, you know, the CityNet proposal, does that mean that SB Act just continues on a month-to-month until we get to?
Correct.
Okay. Could, if we don't, because I totally, I hear what Councilmember Friedman is saying, and I do have concerns about, you know, staff retention and the continuity of service. Are we able to, as part of our motion, motion to grant it to SB Act instead of CityNet? If there's a majority of council that would prefer SB Act over CityNet, is that a motion we could make so as to not delay things further?
Councilmember Santa Maria, so you could reject the staff recommendation and take a different action.
Okay, so we could do that. Okay. Okay. Thank you.
All right, very good. Yeah, it's a little frustrating for me, too, because once again, like Mr. Friedman said, it's another delay situation. This was not done precipitously. Ms. Anderson did not go forward with this project to end it like this. A lot of the effort and the money and the time and the legal effort we put in was substantial. And the opposition by the neighbors was substantial. Jody House was very seriously damaged by this situation. So we've done what we could to correct it, but we had to do it with a heavy hand. And so we're going forward. I don't know what's going to change between now or two or three months from now, other than us trying to resolve our indecision, frankly. So I think that if you put out an RFP for a process, you up or down the RFP, if we're going to reject the entire process, which it sounds like we're doing today, or you're trying to table it, I don't know what we're trying to do here. But I don't get the point, other than another example of indecision and wheel spinning. So to me, we had a very succinct and very clear set of protocols and directions going forward with this. I'd like to see us continue that set of directions and protocol because as we go forward to do the PATH project, eyes are watching. People are critical of us, and for good reason. So we got to make sure we get this right. We got to make sure we're firm. We have to make sure we're consistent. Ms. Nedden.
Thank you, Mayor Rouse. I think to clarify, I would be prepared today to say stay with the status quo for the next 13 months because there's so much in play. It's out of respect for Councilmember Jordan wanting to see it as a complete item, that I am respectful of that. But if it was important to decide today, I think, to me, I'll reiterate, the scoring was relatively level, and the cost is a differential. And I'm concerned about the continuity of care. So if a decision needed to be made today, I have no problem making it. I feel like I have enough information to say, let's stay the status quo for 13 months because we're almost at 13 months, really, by the time it goes through all that, and move forward. So I could go either way.
Ms. Mayor, if I could just clarify the question that Councilmember Friedman asked earlier about the term of the lease agreement that we have with the property owner. And it is two years and one half, one month. So it does end the February 2027 date. There's no early termination.
All right, Ms. Harmon.
Thank you. Excuse me. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, you know, it's really challenging in a lot of ways to be having this level of in-depth conversation on a consent item. I mean, it just is. I don't think that it's good practice to overturn an RFP on a consent item without a, it doesn't sit right to me. I don't know that I necessarily disagree, really, with anything that I've heard. I just don't, I don't know what I don't know. And that is always concerning to me. So my preference here is, especially seeing where my colleagues are, that I think that the import and our level of just deep commitment to getting this right would bear out, that we give it the hearing that it deserves. And I think for both our partners, it really is the most sort of just way to approach, thinking about what the next, I guess by the time we have this hearing in a month, it'll be what the next 12 months look like. So again, you know, the votes will be what they will be. I think where I am coming down is a request that it come back for a full hearing. And then, I think, at least for me, having done the work of a full item, having full opportunity to question if we end up going in a different direction than is recommended, or if we stay the course as recommended by our staff and the committee, I will be able, sorry, I have a cough drop in my mouth as I'm talking, I'll be able to have, sort of give my full-throated support to whatever that decision is, and I don't think that I would be able to get there today. So my ask would be that it would come back in January for a full item, and recognizing that maybe a suite of everything that we have going on in the homelessness space is going to be really challenging for January. I do want to extend some grace and flexibility around what that report looks like, because timing does matter. But just that full opportunity, and for the public, too, to know that there's going to be a full and fair opportunity, an opportunity to comment. Of course, it was published on the consent agenda, but as we all know, sometimes it's really the admin calendar that's looked at by the public. So I would support Councilmember Jordan's suggestion on that today.
All righty. So at this point, we have to entertain a motion. Now, Ms. Connect, are we going to have to deny the?
So, Mr. Mayor, I believe there is a motion on the table that Councilmember Santa Maria made. My hearing of that was that she did make a motion to table it and bring it back for a full discussion in the new year.
Okay, so.
I'll second that.
All right. And since it's consent, we don't have to vote up or down on the consent? We can simply table the item and move it forward?
Correct.
All right. Okay, so that's the motion. Does everybody understand the motion? Okay, may we have the vote, please, Madam Clerk?
Yes, I will state this motion as restated by City Attorney Connect. Please correct me, as you wish. Motion by Councilmember Santa Maria to table this item and bring it back for discussion in the new year. Motion by Councilmember Santa Maria, seconded by Councilmember Jordan.
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Go ahead and vote, please.
Passes six one. Rouse, dissenting. Okay, very good. And that will close the consent calendar. Move on to the next item. Madam Clerk?
Yes, next item is item nine, Adaptation and Resilience Program Update.
I'm sorry, did we do Consent Public Hearing, item eight? We have not, we did.
Yeah.
Yeah. We did what? Yeah.
Okay. Item nine, Adaptation and Resilience Program Update and Release of Draft Wastewater and Water Systems Climate Adaptation Plan.
Adaptation and Resilience Manager, and I'm here to give you an update on our Adaptation and Resilience Program. So I'll give a quick overview of our program, then I will discuss some updated hazard models and analysis that we have. Then we'll talk about the public release today of our draft wastewater and water systems climate adaptation plan. And then we'll give you an update on all of our major projects in our program. And with me today is our small but mighty Adaptation and Resilience Division. It includes me, Timmy Bolton, and Michael Wells. In addition, we have a number of water resources staff because of the wastewater plan, including Joshua Hagmark, Water Resources Director, Thomas Welch, Wastewater System Manager, and Bradley Rare, Principal Project Manager. So the Adaptation and Resilience Program was founded to help our community prepare for current and future climate-related hazards like sea level rise, flooding, erosion, and wildfires. And while the division really serves as the central hub for planning for this effort, the program really spans the entire city, includes a number of departments as partners, including Water Resources, Public Works Department, Parks Department, Waterfront Department, and our Airport Department, to name a few. So when I talk about the program, these are not all things that our division is doing. It's things that we are doing program-wide throughout the city. And I really want to raise up our partners throughout the city who are very supportive of this program. So we have a multifaceted wraparound approach for our adaptation program. We're incorporating climate changes into city planning documents, such as our urban water master planning document that we did a few years ago, which incorporated increased droughts from climate change. In addition, we're looking at reducing flooding and erosion risks. So these are increasing capacity of our creeks and stormwater infrastructure. We're adapting city infrastructure, so moving pipes, floodproofing buildings. We're looking at modifications to building standards to make our new buildings safer. So things like creek development standards and changing our floodplain regulations. And then we're providing the community the resources to adapt. Many of our frequently flooded areas are in low-income areas and really need resources to recover from flooding and become more risk averse. In addition, we are seeking grant funding actively for all of our projects, but also planning for long-term revenue sources for our work and leveraging regional partnerships. So our adaptation planning approach really stems from our 2021 Sea Level Rise Adaptation Plan. This was one of the first adaptation plans approved in the state. And that really allowed us, being ahead of the game, to apply for all the state grant funding that came quickly after that for implementation of coastal resilience projects. And we've really been able to implement many portions of this plan already. The plan puts forth a phased planning approach to adaptation, whereupon changing conditions are monitored and different actions are taken when certain triggers are reached. In addition, the plan sets forth a number of guiding principles to prioritize actions. So these are things like we should be focusing our energy on actions that benefit the greater community rather than a single community member, and other principles, such as protecting critical infrastructure and continuing to provide critical services. So we've obtained over $5 million in funding from the California Coastal Commission and Coastal Conservancy for five major projects that we've been working on for the past two years or just launched. And I'll give an update on each of these. So since 2021, we do have new hazard models for the city and new sea level rise projections. So I just wanted to touch on those. These are the sea level rise projections for Santa Barbara that came out in 2024. And really, we're planning around that orange line, which is both conservative, but also very likely it is the trajectory that our sea level rise to date is following in Santa Barbara. And so that planning shows that now through 2050, what we're calling the near term, is really up to 8.8 feet of sea level rise. From there, for the next 25 years out to 2075, we're looking at up to 2.5 feet of sea level rise. And then the long term really stems out to 2100 or up to 5 feet of sea level rise. And just something to note about this graph, if you look at the first 25 years, you'll note that most of the projections are very close together. There's a lot more certainty about the methods of sea level rise in the near-term timeframe versus the long-term timeframe. But I think this underscores the approach of tracking climate changes and making decisions as certain thresholds are reached. So in our plan, you'll see recommendations based on amount of sea level rise reached versus, like, specific years in which they will be reached. So we did a lot of work, in particular, for the waterfront adaptation plan, looking at how sediment moves in our latoral cell or our region. And in particular, taking a look at the area around the harbor that we knew was not particularly well modeled with our regional models from USGS. And so we do have updated what they're called coastal hazard maps. This is an example of one. So these only show hazards from what's called coastal hazards. So from high wave events, high tide, or storm surges from the ocean. This is not showing flooding from rainfall. So on these maps, the aqua color is flooding from the regular high tide. The yellow color is flooding during the one-year storm event or the one-year wave event. The red is a 20-year event, and then the 100-year event is in purple. So this reflects existing conditions, which is very accurate. We see flooding during high wave events in our waterfront area. You'll also see flooding during extreme rain events, not rain events, but coastal events. events, not rain events, but coastal events on Cabrillo Ball Field. And that also tracks. We are seeing saline water come up into our groundwater in that location and through our culverts already that is killing the grass on the fields. So moving to 0.8 feet of sea level rise, we're out 25 years, we start to see flooding during the one-year coastal storm event across Cabrillo Boulevard in several locations along East Beach. Then moving to 1.6 feet of sea level rise, we start to see flooding in the annual wave event up to the railroad, railroad tracks. By 2075, or 2.5 feet of sea level rise, we start to see flooding up to Highway 101 from high wave events. And then moving out to later, 2100, we start to see flooding from the regular high tide, reaching almost a Cota Street without any interventions. And then as we move to higher amounts of sea level rise, it's that same area. And really, this map reflects the same map of the old El Estero tidal wetland that was filled after the 1920s earthquake. And this area still remains very low and is our historic flood area. So now I'm going to move into beach erosion. And what's not shown on the map is our beaches that are backed by bluffs. So think the area of the Mesa, Thousand Steps area, where you have bluffs directly behind a thin beach. By one foot of sea level rise, it's anticipated that about 50% of our bluff-backed beaches will be lost due to basically being drowned out. And by two and a half feet of sea level rise, it's anticipated that we'll lose access to 80% of those bluff-backed beaches. And so as part of the waterfront adaptation plan, we're taking a really close look at our waterfront beaches because they offer an opportunity for longer-term beach access. And we really want to be prioritizing that beach sand moving forward. So this has led better through the various sea level rise amounts, showing erosion. And as you can see, it does erode in that area. But the harbor breakwater essentially acts like a groin, holding up sand there. And so there still is a lot of opportunity to keep that beach and expand it over time. On the far left of your screen, you'll see West Beach. That is a beach that is actually growing. And even with large amounts of sea level rise, we see remaining. And so that's another opportunity area to really make that beach a great beach to go to long-term. East Beach is another story. We're seeing large amounts of erosion at East Beach, particularly in that Cabrillo Ball Field area, almost 5 feet a year right now. If anybody was out in the high tides that occurred last week and the month before, you would see that the ocean was right up to the bike path. And in fact, storm surge was going over the bike path. And so this is an area that we're really looking at closely as part of our waterfront adaptation planning. Moving to rainfall flooding, this is our current FEMA 100-year flood map, and this shows historic flooding from high rain events. So moving forward, and it is already happening, our rainfall patterns are changing because of climate change. And the reason for that is that as the upper atmosphere warms, it can hold more water vapor. And so when it does rain, it rains at very high rainfall intensities. And then that is followed by periods of drought. So it's very much an all-or-nothing system, even though we are pretty much getting the same amount of rain average every year. It's all coming at these big events. So the perfect example is the storm that was just a few weeks ago in November. Normally, we would not see flooding, first storm of the year, with the creeks empty and our groundwater basins not full. But because the rainfall rates were so high in that one storm, it overwhelmed our stormwater system, and we had flooding in the city. So our consultants took a look at the climate data and tried to boil that down into what we've seen before in Santa Barbara. So the January 2023 storm shown on the screen, that was considered historically a 10-year rainfall event. And moving forward with these climate changes, it's twice as likely to occur. So it's essentially a five-year storm moving forward. And then storms like the 100-year storm that we had in February 1998 is now seven times more likely. And so it's basically like a 15-year storm. So this really highlights the need to take a close look at our stormwater infrastructure and to be looking forward to adaptation. This slide shows the area around El Estero Water Resources Center, and it's a combination of the 100-year rain event and sea level rise, with the left being existing conditions. Right now, when it rains and floods, like it did a few weeks ago, we do lose access to El Estero because the area around it floods. El Estero was built on a higher piece of ground, and so it currently doesn't normally flood on property. But we lose access to the area around it, and that's a major issue. Moving forward with 2.5 feet of sea level rise, we do start to see flooding on property. And so when we move into the wastewater plan, we'll be talking about some flood wall systems and other adaptation measures for that property. So moving on to the launch, the public launch of our wastewater and water systems climate adaptation plan, we're really excited. This is the first plan of its kind in California. We're really ahead of the game. This type of plan is now required for most wastewater treatment facilities. And so we'll be seeing more of this analysis moving forward. But we are leading the way, and that does make us well positioned to get grant funding for future implementation projects. This project, this plan was created by Water Systems Consulting along with ESA associates or Environmental Science associates. It was led by a team of Adaptation and Resilience Division, our water resources staff, and then Public Works Engineering staff that worked closely for almost a year and a half on this project. So we are releasing the plan for a public comment period of 60 days. On the 18th, we'll be giving a detailed presentation to Water Commission on the findings of this plan. Then we'll be going to Planning Commission and back to Water Commission for comments and a recommendation. And then hopefully, once we've made any revisions to the plan, we'll be coming back to council in the April-May timeframe for approval. So the plan does analyze all climate-related impacts, so not just sea level rise, but also changes in rainfall patterns, changes to groundwater levels, increased fire hazards, and drought to all portions of the water and wastewater systems. We did perform a risk assessment to really prioritize risks and adaptation measures. Long story short, all the highest risks out of that risk assessment are related to the wastewater system. And so what you'll be hearing about today and in the future, a lot of adaptation measures associated with the wastewater system. It's not that we didn't look at the water system. It's just that the wastewater system is more vulnerable, in particular, to the impacts of flooding. Again, this plan implements our overall program approach of phased implementation over time and monitoring and taking different actions. There are two major assumptions associated with this plan. So there are other efforts, working on flood control projects and preventing the impacts of sea level rise. But one of the assumptions of adapting the actual wastewater system is that we cannot fully prevent flooding in the low-lying areas below Cota to the ocean, especially with larger amounts of sea level rise. There will always be a certain amount of flooding in that location. And so with these measures, such as flood control measures, we can delay but not eliminate the need for the adaptations of the wastewater system. So it's really not if we need these things. It's just a matter of when. So this is our wastewater collection system. Just for the uninitiated, it's predominantly a gravity-fed system with a few pump stations. So what that means is that when sewage comes out of your residence or commercial facility, it goes down through mains, down to the beach, and then is treated at El Estero Water Resources Center. And then the treated effluent, it goes out our outfall, or is created, or recycled water is created. The plan identifies two major vulnerabilities to this system. The wastewater system in Santa Barbara is separate from our stormwater system. They are not the same system. Some communities have joint systems. We do not. The biggest threat to the wastewater system is actually floodwaters entering the system and overwhelming the pipe capacities and the treatment plant capacities. When that happens, we can see sanitary sewer overflows. So that is essentially either sewage being released to the ocean untreated, or sewage backing up back into the system into people's properties or the streets. And so that's a huge issue that our water resources staff works really hard to not happen currently. But as rainfall rates increases, it is getting harder, and we really are looking toward adaptation measures to prevent that type of activity. Additionally, the other biggest threat is saltwater entering the system, either through groundwater or waves or the impacts of sea level rise. The treatment processes at El Estero Water Resources Center are done with freshwater bacteria. And so if large amounts of saline water are able to enter the system, we would actually have to shut down the treatment plant, or the bacteria would die. And then it would be a three-week process to get it back up and running. So that's a major risk that this adaptation plan addresses. So there's various methods through which floodwaters and just groundwater can inflow and infiltrate into a gravity-fed sewer system, either through broken laterals, leaking pipes. During floods, people open the manholes to try to relieve flooding on streets. And so what we see during our big rain events is a maxing out of capacity at El Estero Water Resources Center. So this is the maximum daily flow through our El Estero Water Resources Center in the winter of '23 and '24. And you'll see several big spikes in that flow. Those directly correlate to our heavy rain events and the flooding we saw during that year. And what that says to us is that when it rains, larger amounts of stormwater are entering the sewer collection system. And so several of the adaptation recommendations relate to trying to prevent this inflow, but also to increase capacity of our treatment center. So the main recommendations related to that are, we already have programs to line pipes and seal manholes, but really to ramp up those efforts, particularly in the low-lying areas. In addition, the plan does recommend that in the 20- to 50-year time period, that we transition the low-lying areas of the city in phases from a gravity system to a low-pressure system. And low-pressure systems are very common throughout the nation in areas where there's high groundwater or saltwater intrusion or flooding, because they're much more effective at keeping outside water out of the sewer system. And so in order to implement this transition, before we can transition over our public mains and public systems to a pressurized system, the individual connections in people's homes and businesses need to be outfitted with grinder pumps and other materials to ensure that sewage doesn't get pushed up into their residences. And so the plan does recommend that in the next few years, we look at a plan to require new connections to be outfitted with grinder pumps and pressurized equipment, and that we also look at incentives and other ways to get existing connections to transition over to pressurized systems so that we are a go for pressurization in the 20-year timeframe. So this is just a summary of the key recommendations for the next 20 years in the plan. Again, on the low-lying area with the sewer systems, it's sealing manholes and sealing pipes, and then planning for that eventual system pressurization. At El Estero Water Resources Center, it's really formalizing what is an informal operations plan right now during flooding events, where we have limited access for many hours to the plant, and also looking at road improvements. In addition, it's suggested that we install now a flood wall system at the facility. In addition, there are several pipes on the waterfront that we'll be looking at as part of the waterfront plan that we would need to protect or relocate due to erosion. And that includes desalination intake pipeline wear box and the utilities under Cabrillo Boulevard. So while this slide summarizes the recommendations for the next 20 years, we do get asked the question all the time of whether or not we're going to have to relocate El Estero in the long term, and if so, where that would happen. And we were required to look at that as part of our plan. And the answer really is that a decision about relocating El Estero or protecting in place is really in the 2100 timeframe, the end of the century. And the plan was, we were required to look at current city-owned properties for potential relocation. And one of the biggest properties that the city owns is the municipal golf course. It's about 108 acres. And we need about 13 to 15 acres for a new wastewater treatment facility. And so the plan does identify that as an option. But I will just say that we have many years now to plan for whether or not we even need to move this facility based on our citywide flood control measures and other cost-benefit analysis. And many of our neighbors are in the same boat. So in particular, Gladea Sanitary District is even lower than we are. And we'll really, at that point, if we're going to make these type of investments, want to be looking at a regional scale for sites and coordination and efficiencies so that we can all protect our systems together at the same time. And so that is the big takeaway, that really moving forward, it behooves us to look regionally. So just to summarize, we're planning to update the plan every 10 years and closely monitor not just changing environmental conditions, but also to monitor system degradation over time. For the next 20 years, the implementation of the plan is between $50 and $130 million, depending on the options chosen. And in addition, just to make these changes would likely require additional staff, resources, engineers, project managers, and the such. So that's a summary of the wastewater plan. I did just want to see if Mr. Hagmark had anything to add. And he's, no? He'll leave it to the end. So we do have a website up that includes the plan and the comment period. It ends February 10th. And that's my contact information if anybody has questions or comments.
I was just going to add, staff has spent a lot of time thinking about this. And I think we've been experiencing these on some level. The council's been aware of some of the flooding that's going on. We've certainly been talking about what we call INI, infiltration inflow, at the Water Commission. So a lot of this isn't news to us, but the frequency of which we're going to be experiencing these events is anticipated to increase. And so how we go about tackling that, it is certainly a big issue. And we're focused right now on looking at the collection of water system, but all the homes that will be impacted by this as well. Because when we talk about this flooding that goes on, this flooding goes into people's houses, it gets into their sewer systems or that means as well. So it's really starting to rethink these. And when we talk about communities that have these type of frequent flooding, you start to get, you know, where you don't habitate the bottom floor, people, you know, start to rethink how we're living in the downtown area. There, of course, are engineered solutions that we can do that all come at a cost, and they all have a certain timeline and lifespan to those investments. And I think that's what we're going to be working with you all and the public to kind of figure out what's the best fit for us.
Thank you. So just quickly on our other major projects, because you'll be seeing several of them in the new year, just, these again are major projects that we're working on, and they all are interrelated. So while this one focuses on the wastewater infrastructure and how to adapt it, sorry, the others look at our stormwater system, our waterfront, and in many cases... the others look at our stormwater system, our waterfront, and in some, in many cases, they have some of the same staff and consultants. So there is definitely coordination amongst the projects. So the Regional Coastal Adaptation Monitoring Program, this is being led by Beacon and it spans both Ventura County and Santa Barbara County. And really, the purpose of this is to get the information that we need to be able to make adaptation decisions over time at the local level. In August 2025, Beacon released a draft plan and this included a prioritization of the parameters that we need to know in order to make decisions, things like shoreline position, overtime and bluff edge. One item that we are hoping to really work on in the next year or so with Santa Barbara County is consistently documenting storm events and impacts of those events so that we know, hey, this one property or this one area has flooded four times in whatever years and there's been this much damage and it's affected these type of people. It's very important decisions when we're talking about phasing adaptation and knowing when to take an action. So we've just begun two years of pilot studies. One is just a demonstration report, basically evaluating existing data out there and providing a baseline for us to work off of. The second is working with USGS to analyze, figure out the use of satellite data. So that's a much more efficient tool to look at shoreline position as opposed to infield measurements, which are very costly and time-intensive. And then we do have an unfunded pilot study of essentially working further with USGS to make this a tool and that could be scaled out statewide and even nationwide. So the waterfront adaptation plan, this really looks to be a practical plan to prepare the waterfront for the next 30 years of storm surges, coastal erosion that we're already seeing and flooding while, and providing that backstop flooding for the rest of the city, while also making the waterfront even better than it is. We're looking at things like increasing pedestrian access, completing the bike way as part of these resilience efforts. And we have a close team that's been working on this from the Parks Department, the waterfront department and Public Works and Sustainability and Resilience. And we've been working about a year and a half and we have a suite of adaptation options that we've identified that we would like the consultant to take a close look at and do the technical analysis and cost-benefit analysis on. We will be taking that suite of adaptation options out to the public in February and to this council to weigh in on. And these are not, the purpose of that exercise is not to pick an alternative, but rather to take a look at the suite of adaptation options that we are going to do further study on. And then our consultants will do that further study, they'll wrap it up into a proposed draft plan, and hopefully in the winter of 2026, we'll be doing another public outreach for that draft plan and hopefully getting final plan adoption in early '27. So similarly, the airport has been managing a climate adaptation plan in parallel with our master drainage plan and master planning efforts. And they have completed also their vulnerability assessment and also have a suite of adaptation measures that they're considering and are going to be bringing public in the February 26 timeframe. We got the same funding at the same time, so all these things are coming to fruition at the same time. And this is really exciting. We have money from Coastal Conservancy and combining it with Measure B Creek Funds to develop the city's first model of its stormwater system. And the pilot area will be the Laguna watershed, although we're hoping to expand it beyond that. And really, that's going to be creating, finally creating a model of our pipe system, modeling these lower-level storms and more frequent storms where we're seeing this more frequent flooding, looking at capacity improvements and prioritizing those, and then analyzing longer-term options for Laguna Channel, which is the source of a lot of flooding now and in the future with sea level rise. So that's super exciting. We're launching that now. We also are launching a Lower Sycamore Creek Flood Mitigation and Restoration Project. That's going to be managed by the Creeks Division in collaboration with our Public Works Operation Team and our Public Works Engineering Team. And this project involves the doubling of capacity and widening and restoration of Sycamore Creek south of Highway 101 to the ocean. We're really excited to start the planning phase and permitting phase of this project. And we are hoping to get the grant funds for that planning and permitting phase at the February hearing of the Coastal Conservancy. So that's all I have. That's our program and what we're up to, and we are available here for questions, comments.
Very good. Questions from council? I had one, actually. So we mentioned some of the stuff we've been working on, obviously Laguna Creek Channel and whatnot, but nowhere in the plan did I see anything about lift stations. We talk about drainage and we talk about seawalls and hardening and armoring, but it seems like all drainage plans require gravity. And since so much of our city is right at sea level and some very much under sea level, I was wondering about how and if lift stations are going to be able to play into the future plans going forward. We know that sea level's rising at some level. We're not, you know, the different models show different rates, but we also know that we're getting a lot of pretty regular flooding from substantial rainstorms. So it seems to me like an earlier adaptation may be the thinking about lift stations. Mr. Hagmark, do you have an opinion on that?
Yeah. Mayor Rouse, that's a great question, and I think that's where we hope the modeling is going to take us. Because certainly putting in a lift station, not only does it protect private property, but it has the added advantage of protecting L Stero. As you saw, a lot of that flooding is just backing up from the Laguna Channel and not being able to get water out. So certainly know modeling that and seeing what can be done is going to buy us time. It's not necessarily going to solve the problem long-term, but it could buy us a decade or two to do those projects. And so trying to understand what the costs are and then what, what kind of time are we buying by making those investments versus retreating? I think that's going to be the community conversation around this. But I agree with you, there are things, very high-dollar projects that could be done to try and buy us some more time.
Right. Well, especially when you, when retreat considers some of the most valuable assets happen to be along that very coastal strip, so that's, that's another consideration as well. All right, very good. Mr. Friedman?
Thank you. There's a lot here, but I have just a couple of questions. Saw a lot of this in sustainability, the new maps and everything. So kind of going back with the flooding, Laguna Creek, you were just mentioning it and the channel, I think it's a lot. So can you speak, there's, Mayor Rouse and I have been contacted by a lot of stakeholders, I think all of us have actually, but in particular, on that, there's the short-term measures that we're trying to do in terms of looking at the gates and the pumps and vegetation maintenance. What is, on slide 44, it references the, it references Laguna Creek as part of the plan. So what exactly is this part of the Laguna Creek Management Plan?
Sure. Thank you, Councilmember Friedman. That's a really good question. So Laguna Channel, it has very, very low gradient, meaning that it's pretty flat. And so, and it drains a very flat area. And so it really presents challenges for increasing capacity and reducing flooding. The bigger fixes are just that, they're big projects. And so the projects you're seeing implemented now, like clearing out sediment, maintenance, improving our pumps to increase capacity at the tide gate, those are happening now and those are fixes that, you know, can alleviate flooding for sure and definitely buy some time. This is really looking at those larger-scale improvements, reorganizing the channel, what are the options for that long-term, longer-term flood improvement and how feasible are they? And what's the remaining flooding, if they're implemented or if they're not?
Great. So just, we are looking at the bigger picture rather than just being reactionary or temporary. We're looking longer-term to get ahead of projected changes. Just a couple more questions. Again, in this area along Highway 101, how are we engaging with, say, Caltrans and to some degree, Union Pacific? I know they're more difficult because they're not an agency, but a lot of the planning that we're going to need to do is predicated on addressing some of the 101 issues, that either they block the flow coming in from north side of 101 down or other capacity issues. So how are we going to incorporate some of our other stakeholders that are not necessarily city?
Yes, that's a great question, Councilmember Friedman. So we are, we will be engaging those agencies all along the way. They are, in general, very supportive of any flood control measures that we can do. I know on the Sycamore, the Lower Sycamore project, we already have a letter of support for that project from Union Pacific, which if anybody's ever dealt with the railroad knows, that's like a minor miracle at this stage in the game. So, and on that project, we, Caltrans has already increased their capacity to allow for that project. So we are actively coordinating with these agencies and will so as part of this stormwater exercise.
Then my last question, it gets to the discussion of going from the gravity-fed or gravity systems to pressurized. So with new construction, it's easier to do that, you just put it in the requirements, but most of the area down there is already built out, so that's going to be private property. So is it the property owners that are going to be, need to make investments? And then if so, how are, how can we help them plan for it, both planning-wise, timeline-wise, but in particular, financial capacity, since some of them might not be able to do that? How are we going to address construction that's already there?
Well, I'll take a stab at the first part of it. It's going to be challenging. I mean, these, the package grinder unit thing, so this is common. I mean, if you go down Rincon, Bates, Santa Claus Lane and Carpinteria, all these areas, these homes have been retrofitted afterwards with grinder pumps. So it's not, it's new to us, but not new to the wastewater industry. So these are some significant investments. We certainly will be looking for opportunities to kind of leverage what those, how to offset those costs. And the critical part is we need the private investment done first and then we'll come in and put in, because they can pump, pressurize, pump into our gravity main for now, and then we'll come in and basically probably slip-line the gravity main with a pressurized main. Because one of the benefits is you might have an eight- or 10-inch gravity main, you can reduce that down to maybe like a two- or three-inch city public main when you do that, when you go to a pump system. But it is going to be challenging and, you know, we got a runway to work with here. So it's how do we capture these properties? It's changing our municipal code and building code around what needs to be installed now if you're building a new hotel or you're building a new business or you're remodeling, when does that grinder pump go in versus when do you start at least laying the groundwork so that we can pull the trigger? Because you can imagine it will likely take a good chunk of time to get all those homes converted over too.
So would there be opportunities, you mentioned like down in Rincon and Sandy Land and all those areas that about a decade or so ago went through this, to go from septic to sewer and then to have that. So we'd look at a number of strategies, either maybe perhaps advocating for state or federal funding to support it, but also perhaps benefit assessment districts like they did down south, those types of things?
Yes, definitely looking at that. I know Heal the Oceans was pretty active in pushing for that and bringing in funding. And then, of course, we'll also keep, you know, potentially liens where it can be done and ultimately if the property changes hands, that could be paid off then. So all the different mechanisms trying to kind of suit what our customers' financial situation.
All right. And then my last question, again, I just want to reiterate on the potential relocation to the golf course, because I expect that's what'll make the headlines, is if you could just go over that one more time, just the timelines that we're dealing with and all that, I think it's important that, all these other important things, and I'll get into comments later, but just want to clarify the golf course one more time for the public and everyone that's watching.
All right.
That it's not imminent.
I'll take a stab at this. I think Melissa did a great job. But, so our NPDS permit required us to put this in here. And it's a little bit frustrating because it's so far out on the planning horizon. I do not want the public to lose focus of what needs to happen in the next 20 years, but we were required to identify a location that was currently owned by the city. And so there was nothing more than that put into it. As Ms. Hetrick said, we need about 15 acres to probably site a new, and the golf course is over 100 acres. So that's how it was selected. That's about the thought process that was put into it. And of course, as you can imagine, reversing how the waters, the wastewater system was designed and pushing it back there is incredibly complicated. I do feel that Guelph is going to be in the same boat, Carpinteria is going to be in the same boat. I really do think there's going to be a healthy conversation when the time comes about a regional facility. Not sure where that would be located, but I think that would be probably the more thoughtful approach to wastewater treatment in the future since so many plants are going to be impacted.
Thank you. Just wanted to reiterate that. Appreciate the additional coverage. You did a great job, Ms. Hetrick, on initially explaining it, but I wanted to make sure we kind of tease that out of everything. Thank you.
Great opportunity for miniature golf, wastewater treatment plant and golf in the same location. Ms. Nedden?
Thank you, Mayor Rouse. So again, and we heard this thoroughly at the Sustainability Committee level, but I had just one question, actually two questions. So the, when we initially with the sea level rise vulnerability assessment adaptation plan, we had the different curves that were low-risk, intermediate-risk, intermediate-high and high. And this, I love this new graphic that you have, and it seems to be focusing in on sort of settling in on intermediate, intermediate-high-to-high risk. And I guess my question is, like initially in 2017 or so, we weren't sure which curve we were on, and we might not still know what curve we're on, but which one does it seem like we're on from that initial plan to today now with new data?
Yeah, so this graph actually doesn't show all the projections. I didn't want to overwhelm everyone, but there's actually a number of other projections. They're just very unlikely. And really, the projections are based on two main things, how the world keeps on or even increases or lowers greenhouse gas emissions. So the ones that are below this is basically the world stopping to emit greenhouse gases immediately. The other big factor is how the Antarctic ice sheet changes over time. And so that that top curve is equally unlikely in the sense of that's a catastrophic failure of the Antarctic ice sheet. And so that lower line is the intermediate, that's essentially the world keeping the emissions we have now and kind of all the processes we've seen in the past moving forward. The more, slightly more conservative, intermediate-high risk does incorporate some of the science behind the Antarctic ice sheet accelerating at sea level rise. And so it's very complicated, but I guess the long, the long story is short is that if you look at our current sea level rise trajectories, they are more closely matching with the orange line, but I would say we're very early days.
Yes.
And so it's hard to say that. It could, it could change at any time. But I would just mention that those two lines, the orange line and the line below it, even in the last projections that were in 2018, those lines were not that much different. What's really changed is all the noise on either side with the extreme projections. And so I think that speaks to the science behind the projections.
I agree. And I think this is, I mean, science adjusts with new data. And that's, I think that's what I'm seeing here is that, I mean, we're still seeing three curves on this chart, but before, in the adaptation plan, our three curves were still contemplating the low-risk, the intermediate and the high. And I think what I'm seeing here is we still have the three curves, but it's going from intermediate, intermediate-high to high. So we're sort of agreeing that that low-risk line is no longer in the running. I guess that's what I'm looking to, I mean, that's how I see it, but I don't know if that's confirmation here.
Councilmember Sneddon, I wouldn't want to say it that way, but it does rely on the world coming together almost immediately and greatly reducing greenhouse gas emissions do, does slow down this curve significantly. So it just, that's not the way things are trending.
Okay. Thank you for that. And then the, with the phased approach, I guess I have this question about, there's flood control and there's- flood control and there's sea level rise. And there's this sort of Venn diagram where your drainage issues are both a result of flood and sea level rise. And I guess my question in the phased approach is, sort of, we have catastrophic events with flooding, and these, I don't know, we used to be built to, what, 25 year flood events, and now those events are much more current, I mean, more common. So I guess the question's about funding and in the phased approach, when we have both sort of flood control, stormwater and sea level rise converging, how do we prioritize with the funding among those? Or is it the same funding for both?
Councilmember Nedden, in some cases it's the same, in some cases it's different. I would say the increase in flooding frequency is the more immediate risk. In some cases, like we discussed with the salt water entering the sewer system, even small amounts of, you know, salt water entering the system, of course, any amount of sea level rise, that's a big deal. So it was really using our risk analysis to prioritize vulnerabilities is really important. But I would say in general, right now, we are already seeing that increase in flooding from changes in rainfall patterns that will get worse over time as the atmosphere continues to warm. We do have some time with these sea level rise hazards, but we also want to get ahead of the game so that we don't have the big combined. And a lot of the adaptation measures on the sea level rise side do require bigger changes that will take more time to plan for and things like that. But I would say in general, we are prioritizing the more near term rainfall flooding hazards in general right now.
Thank you. That makes perfect sense. And so then the question about the Lower East Side, the sort of coastal parts of the West Side, these that are just really so much more frequently flooded, are those part of this update in the plan? Or is that part of the study that you were talking about with Laguna Creek and Lower Sycamore Creek?
So the stormwater modeling that I mentioned, we originally got a certain amount of money from Coastal Conservancy and really wanted to focus that on Laguna because it has so much relevancy for our wastewater system and other areas. But we are hoping to increase the scope of that, especially to the Sycamore watershed, because we are doing the capacity improvements there, but also because of the impacts we're seeing in that neighborhood and the potential to improve them. So that is under discussion right now with our funding partners, and we're hopeful about that, but I don't, I want to, I don't want to guarantee it, but it is a priority of ours to try to expand it.
Thank you so much. If comments, I'll save, but thank you.
All righty, though. If there are any more questions or comments, are there any public speakers online for this item? Didn't think so. This was an information only, no need for a motion. So if there are no more comments or questions, we can move on. Ms. Nedden.
Thank you, Mayor Rouse. I wanted to make some just comments. All right. So, so I mean, I've said this before, Ms. Hetrick, the work that you and your team does is phenomenal. And starting with early days with the adaptation plan or even the vulnerability assessment, you started really strong by saying we're not debating if this is happening, but how quickly it's happening. And I think because of that, we saved so much time and effort in getting right to seeing what the vulnerabilities are and focusing in on the mitigations for that. So I'm really grateful to you and your leadership in that. And I just really want to acknowledge Councilmember Harmon's work on the Coastal Commission and Councilmember Friedman's work on Beacon. And I know, you know, I'm liaison on Water Commission and in education, and I think this is a whole community effort on this. And I just wanted to say too, like I use, I use the adaptation plan, I've mentioned this a million times, but I use it in my class as part of the chapter on coastal erosion and sea level rise and climate change. And it really is the maps, the layout, the way the chapters are laid out, all the mitigation strategies. It's just such a well thought out plan. And then to see these updates on it, to see how that framework for not the years we were going to do certain things, but at which trigger points of how much sea level rise or what storm events. And I'm just really gratified to see how it's, I mean, I wish it wasn't playing out. I wish it was, that we were on the low risk and everything immediately reversed, but feel really good that we're facing this head on and looking at what the actual risks are so we can mitigate them. I mentioned in the, two things mentioned in the Sustainability Committee that I think you'll find, you'll have students who would love to tackle the satellite data. And I'm sure when you bring it to Water Commission, you'll have a few Water Commissioners who will be offering students to be, to be working on that because it's exciting, it's relevant, it's applicable, it's real science, and it informs the future plans. And so that's exactly, it's exactly what science does, adjust with new information and data. So I'm really excited about the stormwater modeling that's coming and really thankful to the Coastal Conservancy for the funding and also Measure B, recognizing that times are changing. And what initially was contemplated with Measure B is expanding for improvements also. So really grateful for that. And I mentioned in the Sustainability Committee meeting, and I'll mention it here, that we've all, I think, heard from various people about the Make Polluters Pay initiative and supporting it. And I know that they're hearing it at the County Board of Supervisors, I think, today. And I don't know if it's, it's agendized for information only, but I would like to put my voice behind supporting the Make Polluters Pay, and if there are other council members who are supportive of that, I think it's really important. I mean, this is going to be billions of dollars of impacts from climate change and not just the extreme weather events, but also the sea level rise and a host of things that aren't even on today's presentation. So I really just wanted to very strongly, I don't know if, I don't know if we're allowed to make a motion at this time because it's not agendized quite, but the Make Polluters Pay, I think, is an important initiative for us to get behind.
Mr. Freeman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just one, appreciate all the work from our staff on this. I know, heard the sustainability, there's a lot that's constantly changing, but at the end of the day, it's the same processes we have to plan ahead, five, 10, 20, even 50 or longer years now. And so great to have our staff really thinking that. And the ability to have the Sustainability Department, our Water Resources Department now, it's not Public Works anymore, but Water Resources on its own, the great leadership there, I think, Mr. Hagmark, Ms. Hetrick, on the water side and the sustainability side is tremendous. And we are really ahead of the game when you go up and down the coast in California and trying to plan for this. So I'm really proud of our city team for doing that. And just a couple of things, the value of the Beacon Regional Coastal Adaptation Management Plan is huge because it's, one, it's tying all of us together within the Ventura and Santa Barbara counties on the coast, the two counties in all the coastal cities. It's part of Beacon that's been around for over 30 years, and now Beacon is having a role that's even more expanded statewide. And this is an opportunity where we not only get data that is reliable, that's going to help us make informed decisions, it's economies of scale, because we're all participating in it, and we have access to other scientific advisors through the Science Advisory Team through Beacon. And we're using the same data metrics that Carpinteria is using, that Galita is using, that Port Winnebago is going to be using. And that's huge because our beaches become their beaches. And to have that same metrics of data allows us to really collaborate more regionally. So I want to give a shout out to Beacon and also to our staff for participating and bringing this forward. And then just the other issues, I know it's going to be tough, but we really need to start planning for the waterfront. And it's part of our sea level rise plan. We actually were, when we did that, the Sea Level Rise Adaptation Plan, we're looking at trigger points. It was something that we advocated for, and the Coastal Commission has looked at that, and it is something that they have been working with, and this is through Councilmember Harmon's work and ours on the local coastal plan committee that we're on. And that's a key point, too, because by using actual conditions on the ground, you're able to react rather than artificial timelines. And so if that doesn't come up, sea level doesn't rise two feet, you have more time to plan for these, whereas if you're making artificial timelines, you waste a lot of resources. So that was another great planning tool that we have through regional collaboration and everything. And then the last thing I'll just say is in terms of the polluters pay principle, I think the Board of Supervisors today just took some action on that and supporting it. We did hear that on the sustainability, we had some public commenters, including our youth, that came and really advocated for it. So I'm supportive of moving that forward. I think there are some ways, either through Legislative Committee or bringing it back to council, through that, that we're able to do it. I don't think we can take a vote today, but I think just giving the support, yeah, voice support for it through whatever that process is, one, to get it done earlier in the year, in the January timeframe, so that we can be proactive in terms of the state's legislative priorities, and we're on the record for that, and can join our partners over at the county. Thank you.
Okay, very good. If there are no other comments, thank you very much, the presentation. And Madam Clerk, we'll move on to the next item.
Item nine, I'm sorry, item 10 is Report on Community Risk Assessment and Standards of Cover Study and Request Funding for Fire Station Location and Facility Master Plan Resolution. Recommendation to the Council, D., Adopt by reading of title only, a resolution of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara, amending Resolution Number 25066, adopting the budget for fiscal year 2026 to appropriate funds for a fire station location and facility master plan.
Very good. Chief Mills.
Good afternoon, Mayor Rouse, members of council. Thank you for spending a little bit of time with us. Chris Mills, your fire chief. With me is Reva Feldman. She's a consultant hired by the Fire Department in the city, and so I wanted her to introduce herself, and then I'll make a few more introductions before we begin.
Thank you, Chief. Good afternoon, mayor and council. Nice to be here. My name is Reva Feldman. I am a retired city manager, was city manager in Malibu, spent my entire career in public service, mostly in Los Angeles County, have quite a bit of emergency preparedness, disaster response and recovery in my portfolio, have led multiple communities through mega event, mega wildfire events, including the Woolsey Fire in 2018. I served in a mutual aid capacity during the 2017 Santa Rosa Tubbs Fire, leading the EOC there, worked in a mutual aid capacity for CalOES in 2020 in the Oregon fires, and I retired from public service a few years ago, and since then have been supporting recovery in Maui after the 2023 Lahaina Fire, and this past year supporting recovery in Los Angeles with the Palisades and Eaton Fires. So something I know well and look at, emergency preparedness from a whole different way of both having run a community and then helping with recovery. So glad to be here and happy to answer any questions as they come up.
Thank you, Reva. Also with us in the audience, we have a number of staff members, Brian Fetterman, Operations Division Chief, Amy Van Adar, Business Manager, Stacy Rosenberg, Emergency Manager, and we have representatives of Local 525, Bob Kendall, Association President, Alex Carbo is here, and an engine crew. So they have been eagerly awaiting the public rollout of this. They've seen the document, and, but this is the final public rollout so that the community can really see this document. So before we begin, what is a community risk assessment and standards of cover study? What is it? So community risk assessment looks at the specifics of what faces your city as a community and the hazards that that city is expected to respond to competently. So that's the community risk assessment. The standards of cover study looks at what the department is doing, how they're providing services, where they're providing services, and how they compare to other agencies. So it's really a deployment analysis. It looks at not only the physical buildings, the physical location of the stations, but also how quickly the crews respond to different types of incidents. And those incidents, again, go back to the community risk assessment, what do we see? And I like to say fires, floods and falls, meaning major fires, major flooding, and then, of course, we run a very large number of medical calls, and that's greatly simplifying it. But before we really get into it, I want to assure council and assure the community that we have a great fire department. It's a pleasure to lead the department, it's a pleasure to work with the women and men of this fire department. We've had incredible change in the last few years. I have a staff that is eager, engaged, appreciative of working in the city, and that, of course, includes the firefighters. And so they're the ones that are out there handling those calls for service. And my job as a fire chief is to support that, number one, and then, of course, to look out and be the visionary to try to see what's coming our way and what we can expect to see, the demands of the fire service over the next few years. So I like to tell people that my job is to look out to the community 90% of the time, but I have the staff that looks to the department 90% of the time. And so that's really what this study is all about. To give you an idea of the timeline, it began really in about 2020. Paul Casey was the one that approved this being funded, and it took a while to get it ramped up and started. And then we'll talk a little bit about the delays. But most importantly, what I appreciate about this study is that it really took a look at our fire department very objectively. It gave us the accolades we deserve, and then it gave us a number of things that we can work on. The study was completed in 2023, so a lot of things have been done since then, and we'll talk about what's been done. We didn't just sit on this. We went, hey, we can handle this, we can do this, we can do this, we can do this. So a number of things have been handled since then. So the actual report, we had AP Triton, they're initially out of the Bay Area, they're the ones that won the RFP, it went to council on January 11th, 2022. One of their strong points is they'd already done a lot of work in the county, and they'd specifically done a station location study for Montecito Fire that we were able to look at and look at the comprehensiveness of their report, and we were very pleased that they could be selected. The study commenced in 2022. I asked for it to be very transparent. I wanted the community involved, I wanted city council involved, I wanted other city leaders involved, I wanted us, wanted people to really take a look at the fire department, what is being provided, and what the expectations are to be provided. So we finished the report in 2023. I asked for a subsequent performance analysis to be done in 2024, partly because one of the things that I noticed was some slower response times to our EMS calls. I knew the reason, but I wanted to make sure that it was indeed an anomaly, and that was in fact the case. The COVID pandemic, we really changed the way that we responded to EMS calls. We put on a lot more equipment, we were very methodical with our approach, we were very methodical with the way we contacted patients, and so there was a few changes. So what I wanted to do was to get past the COVID pandemic and really take a look at our response times, which indeed went down. But the public rollout of the SOC was delayed, and we're now getting to it. And I really have to thank Ms. McAdoo, when she came in, it was one of the first questions she asked me, and I said, yeah, we have this, and she said, okay, let's start moving on it. So it was very well appreciated. So really, again, the SOC provides a long-term vision for the fire department. So some factors to be considered during the implementation. So in June of 2025, and this is an example of one of the findings and recommendations, in June of 25, we moved to the Regional Fire Communication Center. Some of you attended the ribbon cutting today. The RFCC is in full operation with every local government fire department in the county of Santa Barbara, all being dispatched under one roof. Excluded in that is Vandenberg Space Force Base and the Forest Service. They're not part of the regional center, but from Guadalupe to Carpinteria, we're all in the regional center. One of the issues we have, of course, is limited discretionary funding. The city is, I like to say is a little bit unique, and you've heard me say that I think the vulnerabilities that we face as a city of our size are extreme. We have a very, very complex city to protect, and we'll spend a little bit more time talking about that. One of the findings of the consultant was that our fire stations are housed in dated and/or historic structures, and many of them do not have any kind of seismic retrofit to them. A lot of the stations were built in the 50s and 60s. retrofit to them. A lot of the stations were built in the 50s and 60s, and they've largely stood the same since then. But what we're looking at is a phased implementation process that maximizes available funding and resources to effectively implement the SOC. So we really want to take a methodical and measured approach with, with rolling all of our recommendation, all of the recommendations out, because some things need to happen before other things. We can't put the cart before the horse on some of the recommendations, and I'll explain that. So some of the vulnerabilities, and again, you've heard me talk about from miles of beaches, harbors, a 2,200-foot wharf, aging infrastructure downtown, a highway, a railroad, a wildland urban interface, our geographic isolation, our airport. A city of our size that has this complexity really leads to us spending an inordinate amount of time training our firefighters to handle the myriad of emergencies that we see. We have airport-trained firefighters. We have ocean rescue-trained firefighters. We have urban search and rescue. We, we spend an incredible amount of time preparing our firefighters to handle these vulnerabilities that our city sees. Little bit of overview of the department. We have 105 full-time employees, including 94 firefighters, inspectors, and we have 11 administrative personnel, support personnel for the department. Last year, we ran over 12,000 calls, 12,136 to be exact, and I'm going to date myself a little bit. You may have heard me say this. I started in 1993. We were at 5,500 calls. So that was 3,200, excuse me, 3,200 years ago, 32 years ago, 32 years ago, and our call volume has, has overdoubled. And a little bit more about some of the background information. Again, I've said from fires to floods and everything in between. When you have a 4,000-foot south-facing mountain range that borders above your city, and we know all about how the storms come into the city, we just heard a presentation from Sustainability about what, what flooding is immediately apparent in the city of Santa Barbara. And then, of course, we do have wildfire risk that is continuing every year. If it doesn't actually happen in the city, it happens near the city, and our firefighters are often called both locally, state, or to federal incidents to help combat those incidents. Just reviewing the emergency dispatch system that we now have, we now have, we are now a part of the Regional Fire Communications Center, and the mantra or the motto of the RFCC is closest available resource regardless of jurisdiction. Okay, that wasn't so a year or so ago. We really stuck to our borders, and the city would run up to the city border, and the county would run into the county border. We did have some automatic aid areas that were pre-designated, where we would go help each other, but now it's done by one single dispatch center. I was just listening yesterday, and there was a call in the Five Point Shopping Center that was handled by County Fire Medic Engine 13 on Hollister because they were closest. And that's how the system should work. There's also a move-up system embedded into it, so our resources can really move geographically anywhere around the county. The data that will be coming out of the RFCC, they have procured a contract with a data analyst that will be providing a large amount of data, which is going to be at our fingertips on a daily basis to be able to pull minute by minute incident types, response times, who's handling what calls. There's, they're talking about putting a, a data dashboard on a website so that you can see how many calls, where the calls are happening. But it's, it's moving our fire service communications light years ahead. So the city fire department provides basic-level EMS care to the community. We call that BLS. BLS is synonymous with EMTs. EMTs have about 200 hours of train, initial training. Then there's ongoing training, but 200 hours of initial training. Conversely, when you hear the term ALS, that means paramedic, that means advanced life support, and you're looking at quite a jump in training of 1,200 to 1,500 hours of training for a paramedic. So we provide basic life support, and the contract ambulance provider provides all advanced life support in the community. One of the questions that has come up over time is, can we provide our own ambulance service? And the answer to that is, no, we cannot. In June of 1980, legislation was passed, 1797.201, which became, quote, 201 rights. And that said, at that date, just a line of demarcation, you are, you can change your level of service, meaning we could go from EMT to paramedic on a fire truck, but you cannot change your type of service. So if you are not providing ambulance service in June of 1980, then you have to apply to the county of Santa Barbara for the ambulance contract, and in this county, the county contracts with one ambulance provider. Now, there are three other county fire ambulances in the county, but that's because they were working before 1980. So those units were grandfathered in, into the system. So the consultants really looked at our EMS response. They looked at the standard of care, and I'm going to share some details about what kind of care is being delivered around us and really throughout the state. But really to provide more complete coverage to the entire city of Santa Barbara, we really need to look at the way that we are providing EMS response. So our staffing, currently we have 28 firefighters on duty plus a battalion chief, so a total of 29. Our personnel include the battalion chief, nine captains, 10 engineers, and nine firefighters. The reason there's one more engineer is because we run two engineers and a captain at the airport. We have two rigs with three personnel. So an engineer operates each one of the rigs, and the captain is in one of the, the airport crash vehicles. We're, all of our stations, stations one through seven are staffed with Type 1 fire engines. The airport has very unique fire, airport crash trucks only. Additionally, stations four and seven have brush trucks, and we house our single ladder truck at Station 1. So Station 1 actually has eight personnel, and then the remaining seven stations have three personnel each. Our fire department management team includes the fire chief, operations chief, fire prevention battalion chief, admin services manager, emergency manager, and four battalion chiefs. And Station 1, as I said, houses eight total personnel. This other seven stations houses the three. Very important for us to realize that our, our stations were built anywhere between 1929, and that Station 1 is probably our newest remodeled fire station about 15 years ago. We have very, very aging buildings. And again, I alluded to that, but the stations are only set up to house three firefighters. And so we're going to talk about some of the difficulty if we were to move to four firefighters, which is also a norm in a lot of the communities that are, they run four firefighters on an apparatus, and I'll explain why in, in a bit. The city does not have a comprehensive facilities improvement plan to renovate, expand, or relocate any of its fire stations. Recent improvements have been made on a case-by-case basis as funding has become available. We have done work over the years. I've been a part of minor remodels at, at multiple fire stations, just trying to limp the stations along. But one of the things the SOC found is that we have two stations that are particularly problematic, and I'll get into more detail of Station 3 and Station 7 as we move on. We also have a training facility that is in needing, in need of renovation. And so the SOC provides a general blueprint, 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 excuse me, for facilities needing attention, but it's recommended that the city really under, that was a tough word. That really was. It doesn't look like it on the screen, but it was a tough word, that the, that the city undertake a comprehensive fire facilities and fire station location study. So just a map of where our stations are. The, as the city was expanding a number of years ago, the stations were actually put in fairly good locations. You actually don't want your fire stations on major streets. You actually want them on a, a smaller street or, or a quieter street, very near a major street. So I think back to the 1960s when Fire Station 1 was put on Correo Street, it probably wasn't nearly as busy as it is now. But you want to have quick access to major streets, major thoroughfares, freeway, et cetera. But our stations are located in very good locations. What has changed recently is our move to the regional dispatch center. We now have a fire station that borders the city and Montecito, Montecito Station 92. We have a fire station in Mission Canyon, and we have a fire station on Hollister Avenue that's immediately at our beck and call. So I'd mentioned a number of years ago when I was talking to you about the regional center, and I said, Station 15 in Mission Canyon is going to end up coming down into the city on a regular basis. And that, in fact, has proven the case. In fact, we've had a couple of structure fires on the Upper East Side, and they have been first in. So that is how a regional center is supposed to work. People don't care the color of the fire engine. It's just get there as quickly and safely as you can. So with two stations needing to be rebuilt and/or relocated, a modern fire station location study is warranted. We also need to look at development of our community. As I've said to people, take a look at the tower cranes. Where are they? They're downtown. And so I'm going to talk to you about what my recommendations are for augmenting staffing downtown, because I think that a three-person engine and a four-person ladder truck downtown, we really need to immediately start looking at the fire protection downtown. I'll explain more in detail. So looking at the fire stations, and I'll go through this rather quickly, but Station 1 was constructed in 1960, and it was remodeled in about 15 years ago. The consultants rated it as excellent because it was earthquake renovated back in 15 years ago. So it is in excellent condition. Fire Station 2 on the Lower East Side on Casique Street was built in 1993. It was brand new when I started. It kind of hurts for me to say that. So, and I hate, I, I just can't feel like I, I need to say that needs to be renovated because it started when I was, but it has the capacity to handle, house three firefighters. Station 3, and, and I always say a picture tells a thousand words. If you can look at that fire engine in Station 3, I can definitively tell you that it has less than an inch and a half of clearance around that engine going in. And I can also tell you that the next fire engine we purchased for that station, it will not fit. There's no way it will fit. And so it's a historic building. We were allowed to make very minor improvements to it, but our ability to expand it large enough to get a modern fire engine into that station, it's not going to happen. There's just no way. So we may be able to look at the footprint of the property and see if we can make any changes elsewhere or put an apparatus for, possibly to the rear. That's going to be difficult also. So, but we're still looking at that. Also has the ability to handle or, or house three firefighters. Station 4 on North Ontario was constructed in 1985, three firefighters, and probably does not have, it does not have any earthquake renovations. Station 5, again, 1966, no earthquake renovations, three firefighter capacity. Station 6, 1962, remodeled in 2000, and the consultants gave that a good rating because the renovation that was done to it made it a lot more livable and, and brought up some standards. But we also need to look at the earthquake standards on that building. Station 7, you've heard me talk about it. It sits on two earthquake faults. It is, of course, fire stations are labeled essential buildings, so they have to have a certain distance from any known earthquake faults. So it's going to be difficult to rebuild on that site. So what are our options there? And so we'll be looking at that. Station 8 on Hartley Place, again, that's the airport crash station. It's rated as good. It actually has the cap, capacity to handle four firefighters. There's currently three there. The numbers are dictated not so much by our department, but by the FAA, and what type of index the fire department, or, excuse me, the airport is, and that FAA index then talks about what the fire protection should be. So we have a, a, our indexing is right where we want it to be with personnel. The training facility on South Olive is in, I would call, fair to poor condition. I told somebody in a previous presentation that fair really means poor. And what we're going to look at with the feasibility study is the consultants look at how much money would need to be put into the building versus where do we, at what point does the, does it tip? And are we, do we just need to cut our losses and, and go into a new building because of the cost of the repair could exceed the cost of building a new station? So what we do have some work to do at the training facility. So here's to the meat and potatoes of what the SOC recommended. Again, one thing I want to make sure of is that there's a lot of stuff that we have done. To give you an example, they recommended that we do fire prevention inspections of multifamily dwellings annually. We had been doing them every two years, so they recommended annually. So we have since done that right away. That was something we implemented right away, which increased the number of building inspections our folks are doing. But also, if you look at multifamily, that's the highest life hazard, and those, those are where we should be. We should be in there looking at those on an annual basis. But these are the recommendations that came out of the SOC. Reva and I worked really diligently to, and by the way, the, the document, if you had a chance to look at it, it's 249 pages long. So we distilled this down to 29 slides. So we've really tried to capture the essence of it and, and really give the community a really good overview. Their first recommendation is to improve or begin paramedic service on the fire apparatus. I'm going to spend a little bit more time talking about that. They also recommend creating a full-time position for EMS program administration. I will talk about those two need to go hand in hand, and we can't start an ALS program without adequate assistance, adequate personnel to manage the program. They recommend a full-time administrative assistant. At the time when we went, did the SOC, we were kind of thinking this person could work in multiple areas, but really where the person needs to work is in training, and I'll explain how, all of that. We need to establish a capital improvement and replacement program, including the facilities assessment. We need to figure out how to improve or find alternate sites for Station 3 and Station 7. We need to continue and expand our educational programs that target identified community risks in both English and Spanish. We'll talk about that. We need to have greater emphasis on quality assurance of records management. They recommend increasing staffing by one firefighter per apparatus per shift, resulting in four-person engine companies, and they recommend creating a community risk reduction plan. And again, we'll spend a little bit more time on each one of them. So again, the SOC provides a basic framework to upgrade services provided by the SBFD. Again, this was the consultant's job. Look at the city, look at the risks, look at the services being provided, and look at what services should be provided. So a little bit about advanced life support coverage. Again, due to legislation, we can't provide our own ambulance service, but they recommend we increase advanced life support care to the community. Their first recommendation is to place a paramedic squad, which would be a two-person squad, at the downtown fire station. The reason for that is that a, a two-person squad can maneuver and get around the city very, very quickly compared to an engine company or a ladder truck. I think if we were to fast forward a few years, I'll explain how I think we can do both. Think we need to have a paramedic squad, and then we can place paramedics on fire engines also. But what's so important to me and to fire chiefs is that when we expand services, it shouldn't be at the expense of services we're already providing. Okay, and I'm going to just give you one quick example. The easy thing for us to do is to put a paramedic on Engine 71 downtown. But the way the regional center is working, by grabbing the closest resource available, that engine's going to be going all over town responding to EMS calls, leaving downtown Santa Barbara with no fire engine. So that, that's an expansion of service, but then that also compromises fire protection downtown. So how do we manage both? So they recommend a two-person squad initially, and then their first recommendation for a four-person engine company, which I'll get to, is Engine 71, which is our downtown Correo Street engine. And I'll get to the reasons why, but I think it, development and density and fire flow requirements, but I'll explain why three versus four is, is important. We also have, in our city, we prioritize three stations for coverage. When a major incident is going on, we ensure that Station 1, 4- When a major incident is going on, we ensure that Station One, Four, and Two are covered. So if we're down to three fire engines in the city, that's where they are, and then we call them the priority stations. It makes a lot of sense to put our paramedic personnel there, also on those engines. I don't think we need a paramedic on every fire engine in the city. I think ideally, every other district would be fine if we were looking at a crystal ball. Our call volume doesn't dictate having a paramedic on every, at every station, but I think if they were able to get on scene fairly quickly to the next district, that would, that would be warranted. But before we begin any kind of an ALS program, we need to have someone that is overseeing EMS in our department. In fact, I will even say that even if we don't start an ALS program, this would be the position that I would ask for, the number one position. We are running 8,700 EMS calls a year. We have equipment. We have supplies. We have quality improvement. We have quality assurance. We have a large workload to oversee the response to almost 9,000 calls. And right now, I have a shift battalion chief that is overseeing EMS. And that shift BC should be spending a lot more time with crews and training and things like that. So typically, this person is a management-level person, and most departments use registered nurses. Typically with an EMS background, I can tell you just anecdotally, that all of the departments around us use an RN, one or more. County Fire has three registered nurses on staff to oversee their paramedic program. I mentioned the administrative assistant. The SOC was a little bit more vague on where it should go, and I think it really depends on, on where they could best work. But where they really, really could use, would have the biggest impact is in our training division. We have two personnel overseeing the training requirements of 105 personnel. And so it's a large lift. What ends up happening is we have a lot of people that are, excuse me, we have a lot of work that gets done by the captain and battalion chief that are administrative tasks. So we can be more efficient with someone. Anything to add? Okay, okay, all right. Recommendation number four is a capital improvement and replacement plan. I want to split this into two. If we're looking at equipment, we've done a great job in the last couple of years of securing funding through Measure C, where we have an equipment replacement fund. So everything from the jaws of life to hose to, to tables and chairs in the fire station, we have all of that in our replacement fund so that we don't have to go at the last minute and look for equipment. We have an amortization or a shelf life for, say, the jaws. We know how long that lasts. We know how long the hose stays in service. We now have a plan to replace all that. But what about our station facilities? That is what has been significantly lacking. There, again, has been no comprehensive plan to take a look at all of our essential fire department buildings with a plan to move forward over the next 10, 20, even 50 Specifically called out, though, is Station Three and Station Seven, as we talked about. Very difficult to make any changes to Fire Station Three due to its state historic landmark. We, a number of years ago, probably 25 years ago, we were allowed to make one change. It's kind of a nice little trivia. If you look at the picture, the apparatus door on the left is square, and the apparatus door on the right is curved. We were allowed to make that change because we could not fit the fire engine into the station. So we applied and we got a variance. However, the problem we're now faced with is width and height of a fire engine. We talked about Station Seven, and the, our ability to renovate on-site is really a nonstarter. Next recommendation was to expand and develop multi-language programs. As you know, we have a bilingual public outreach coordinator in our department, Liliana Encinas. I always say she does the work of three people. She seems to be everywhere all the time. And so in speaking with her, when the consultants met with her, we really started to look at the more centralized city public information and how we, as a city, not only the fire department, police department, Public Works, who has really the most forward access to the community, we really need to work together. And so their recommendation was not necessarily to house additional personnel in the fire department, but to look at how to expand, expand our access in the community in general. Recommendation number seven was quality assurance and records management. Simply put, that's reviewing data. How quickly are our folks getting to calls? What types of calls are we going to? Are they best equipped to respond to those calls? What, what are we seeing as far as impediments to response? Is there something going on in the district that's impeding their response to an incident? Things like that. And so what they really wanted us to do was to really start spending more time looking at our data. This would be accomplished with that EMS coordinator position. This would be the person that would be looking at our response data on a daily basis, that would be in that data and seeing issues before they became a large issue. Or just as an example, perhaps they're, they're looking at it and they go, you know, we've had six traffic accidents at this intersection in the last two weeks. You know, that may raise, you know, what's going on there? Maybe nothing. But having somebody continually overseeing that data on a short, medium, and long-term basis, you're really able to, to, to reflex and, and make changes in your response a lot quicker. Recommendation number eight is to increase staffing by one personnel per apparatus. And so just to give you an idea about, about where this comes from. So when firefighters are working in hazardous environments, okay, whether we call it IDLH, immediately dangerous to life and health, they have to work in pairs. They have, there's, it's the buddy system. You can't go into a burning building by yourself. You have to go in with one more person. When you have a crew of three, they can only do one task. However, when you have a crew of four, you split that crew, and they can do two tasks at once. So NFPA 1710, which came out a number of years ago, recommended four-person engine companies largely because of that, that two tasks can be done at the same time. So the efficiency of the apparatus is actually increased by 50%. So they recommended that in, long-term, that's what the department should be going to. In the short-term, we need to make sure that our stations can house the additional personnel. And then I think we need to have a very data-driven approach to that. I can tell you that Engine 71 downtown is approaching what's called a 10% unit hour utilization. That means 10% of the time, they are on incidents. And when you exceed 10%, you start to have what we call double hits in the area, meaning they're on a call, so we need to bring another engine in. Additionally, the complexity of downtown, when we're looking at things like the commercial occupancies, you're looking at the multifamily dwellings, you're looking at buildings greater than 50,000 square feet, you're looking at large fire flow requirements. This town, especially downtown, is getting more dense, and it's getting more difficult to protect as far as fire protection. So that would actually be my recommendation initially is to go and then look at the data and see how quickly we can get what we call an effective response force to the scene with our other stations. The SOC did point out that we actually are slightly light on personnel. We have 0.97 firefighters per 1,000 population, and the Western U.S. has about 1.05. So we're a little bit light, and that's where I think that two-person squad would come in, which would give us two more firefighters on duty. A four-person engine downtown would give us another firefighter on duty downtown. This is that methodical approach that we need to move forward on. Just to give you an idea, though, the four-person engine company with 21 additional FTEs would be about $4.2 million annually. So it, it does come with a price tag. So we, we need to look and methodically move forward. And, and again, where I started thinking about where the paramedics would be at those priority stations, perhaps that's the first three stations we think about with four personnel. So that, but that's just kind of the, the thought process of moving forward. And then recommendation, recommendation number nine is a community risk reduction plan. People always ask what it is, and I say, here's what it is. It is a fire, we all know what a fire prevention program is. We know that our firefighters go in and they inspect buildings and they, they look for fire hazards. A community risk reduction plan looks at all of the hazards that the community faces, from, from ocean rescues to train incidents, to any type of incident that we respond to. And then what they do is they inject education, engineering, enforcement to the least extent, economic incentives, and then, of course, at the end would be emergency response. So what we're really looking at doing is, is educating and looking at the risks that the community faces on a daily basis, and how do we mitigate that risk? I'll give you a perfect example of where that is occurring. Cottage Hospital has an amazing outreach program of injury and fall prevention. Okay? And they have the car seat programs. That's all a community risk reduction service. So what can the fire department do? So most obvious right now is increasing defensible space inspections, home hardening, the economic incentives associated with home hardening, things like that. Does this person need to lie in the fire department? Not necessarily, but this person would work with police, Public Works, sustainability and resilience to really look at a much broader picture of how we, how we protect our community. So moving forward, where we're at right now, again, I've talked to you about some of the things that we've already enacted. They recommended a remodel of Fire Station Six, the rear area of the station, that is in progress. They recommended reinstating the fire prevention inspector that was held open for a number of years. That is also in progress. And especially with our move to the regional communications center, fire communications center, our data has become much more robust, and it's, it's happening right now, which is exciting to see. So a little bit about the implementation schedule. We're looking at, here we are in December, here we are December 9th. And depending on council's input, whether community meetings would be warranted, but we have presented it to the firefighters. We presented it to the Fire and Police Commission, and we've presented it now here in council. Starting in 2026, we're going to really begin analyzing data from the RFCC. It's not, you really aren't going to see good trends if you're analyzing just a couple of months of data. Six months is about the least. And really, when you're looking at making significant changes to your fire department, you're looking at really wanting to have about three to five years of data. So before we were to move a fire station, that's really what we need to look at. So 2026, again, analyzing the RFCC data. I would like to get approval, especially at mid-year, for an EMS coordinator. And again, that, that position, whether we decide to start an ALS program or not, is needed. We are working right now to expand our educational programs, and then we would like to conduct a facilities assessment and fire station location study. And out of that location study would be to identify funding and/or alternate sites for both of those fire stations. So the recommendations today that were in the council report are that you receive the report presenting the priority recommendations from the CRA SOC. We are hoping that you'll authorize the fire chief to negotiate into a consulting contract approved as to form, not to exceed $100,000 for a station location and facility master plan. We make the expenditure appropriations in Measure C and then adopt by reading the title only the resolution to appropriate the funds for the fire station location study. I want to, I want to spend just a little bit more time on that study. It's two-part. One part is to look at the physical facilities and the condition. The second part is we have now the ability to procure an incredible amount of data that literally tells us where the calls are happening, and to a certain extent, they tell us where the next calls are going to happen. And so where are our fire stations located? If we do need to renovate, we will have the data, or excuse me, to, to move or close a fire station, we'll have the data that tells us we should put it here. Now, I know real estate is precious in the city of Santa Barbara, so it's going to be difficult to find a location. But the point is, is that perhaps the station, since we need to close it down anyway, perhaps we move it a couple of blocks over here because this is closer to where the majority of the calls are in that district. So that's the two-part approach to the study, is the physical locations and then moving forward with where our future stations are going to be. So with that, I'll turn it back to you.
Thank you, Chief. I want to echo what he started by saying, that, that your department and your city is in very good hands. I know this sounds like there's a lot of things that need to be better or changed or improved, and that is the case, but even with all of that, your community is safe. I try to remind you all that we live in a dynamic time, and so buildings that were built 40 or 20 years ago, what we need now is different. A fire department in 2025 or a city in 2025 is very different than a city 30 or 40 years ago. And so I really do commend your city administrator and your fire chief for thinking big picture and thinking ahead, and what are we going to need and where can we invest now that will carry us forward as we change. I love the idea of using the data to make very informed, appropriate decisions. These are big decisions. These are expensive decisions, and so be mindful of how we do that, doing pilot programs. Is this really what our community needs? And Santa Barbara is a very unique community. I come from a coastal city, spent my whole career there, and so I'm very familiar with those risks that you all face. And then add on that you have an airport. Add on that we see, you just heard a sustainability report right before us about flooding risks. We're seeing floods and rain events that we've never seen before. We're seeing mega fires that we've never seen before. And so keeping that all in mind as you move forward, so even though this report has been kind of on the ground, it still is very relevant to the changes that need to happen. I, I think too, you know, hearing things like having a community risk reduction program, what that will help do is make your community more resilient. Where we're seeing communities succeed in major events, whether it's a flood or other types of disasters or fire, is communities that have taken it upon themselves to be independent and getting their residents and their business communities to be prepared and understand that. So doing outreach like what we're familiar with, brush clearance and home hardening programs, but those exist in all different types of risk areas. So it's a combination of the city doing a lot of things, your staff doing a lot of things, and then educating your community to also do the right thing and help meet on the other end. So I'm happy to go into any more of the areas and recommendations that were in there that the chief mentioned, but would love to hear from the council at this point.
I think we're going to take a pause because we have Boys, Boys and Girls Club presentation, and then we'll come back and do council comments and questions.
Love that. I heard.
Okey dokey, here we go. Was going to try to get you guys in beforehand, but it wasn't gonna, wasn't gonna happen. Alrighty, thank you for so patiently waiting out there and so well behaved. This is better than we do most of the time with our crowds, isn't it? This is great. So tonight, we're going to recognize the gold card status for the Boys and Girls Club of the West Side Unit. So on behalf of the Santa Barbara City Council, it is my pleasure to recognize and congratulate all the students who achieved gold card status for their stellar attendance, which I believe is 105 days, is that correct, of attendance at the Boys and Girls Club? So I'm going to read off some names, and I know that not all of you are here, but the ones that are here have received your certificates. And you're going to have to bear with me on some of the names. Sofia Adame Marquez. Come on up. So we're not going to have time to applaud for every one of you guys, trust me on this, so if you can kind of contain your enthusiasm. Brianna Alvarez Lopez. Emiliano Andrade, who I don't believe is here. John Carlo Barreto, who I don't believe is here. Clara Benitez, who is not here. Joseph Briggs. There we are. The next few names are, are not here. Christopher Cantu. Emily and Rose Cantu. Daniela Hansu Chamorro. Wachaka. Melanie Chamou. Oh, somebody here? Oh. Which one is that? Is that Melanie?
Daniela.
Oh, Daniela. Oh, okay, hi. Briella Finn. Not here. Okay, then Jacob Flores. And Robert Flores. Liam David Garcia Galan. Jose Luis Garcia Hernandez. Neymar Garcia. Samantha Godinez Carpio. Kiara Gonzalez. Elmer Juvara Sanchez. Alexa Gutierrez. Isaiah Alexander Gutierrez. Leo Holtgren. Sofia Ibarra Medina. Jayden Jacobs. Tiloq Jasso. Juan Carlos Javier Renteria. Tiago Heranimo. Luis Juarez Carvajal. Colette Kleinebacher. Lillian Kleinebacher. Sarah Lopez. Williver Lopez. Mateo Marquez. Erin Martinez. Sebastian Martinez. Ivana Guadalupe Medina Carmenteras. Maximo Medina. Monseirat Mesa. Marcel Maureen. Daisy Mosquera. And Lily Mosquera. Aaron Nacasio. Brandon Nacasio. Isabella Nacasio. Lila Ochoa. Want to come in? Cheyanne Ortiz. Faith Ortiz. Kevin Ortiz. Jason Padilla. Vivian Padilla. Isabella Pelles. Raquel Palico. Axel Yael Perez Acevedo. Alexander Ramirez. Anthony Ramos. Kevin Reyna. Jhenis Emmanuel Rios Flores. Brandon Rivas. Tiago Rivera. Matthew Sanchez. Julín Saucedo. Tiago Silva Lopez. Hunter Oliver Vaquez Garcia. Fernando Vega. Lila Velazquez. Nicholas Velazquez. Kendra Zamora. Esmeralda Zavala Martina. And Michelle Zarita. And I think, did we get everybody? All right, congratulations, everyone. Okay, if you guys can all be as quiet as possible as you sneak out of here. Appreciate that, thank you.
Do you have to put it in PowerPoint?
Yeah, I guess we better.
Mayor Ross, the fire chief had a couple comments he forgot during his presentation, and then I was going to-
You've got to be kidding me. All right, chief, go ahead. The floor is yours, chief.
This button right here. One thing I wanted to share with council that was minimally addressed in the Standards of Coverage Study is the ISO rating, Insurance Services Office. The ISO is a nonprofit that rates fire departments on their structural firefighting capacity or capability. Our department, four years ago, six years ago, was rated, was called a Class II, with about 82 points. We just redid our ISO rating, and we went up to 86.96. 90 puts you at a Class I fire department. We are three points away from being a Class I fire department. So the ISO said, you're so close, we're going to revisit it again in June. And the ISO raider said, you will become a Class I fire department. As of 2023, there were only 44 Class I fire departments in the state of California. What does that mean? The ISO is one factor that assurance, excuse me, insurance companies used, use to rate risk, not only for residential buildings, but for commercial buildings also. So, and, and fire departments, you'll see, if you go to Los Angeles, Burbank, Glendale, you will see on the side of the fire engines, it says Class I fire department. That's the ISO rating. And so that is one thing that I grabbed out of the SOC in 2023, and I said, we're going to spend a lot of time. And we did spend, staff spent an inordinate amount of time really working with the ISO to get that rating. And so they have said that with our move to regional dispatch, we will be over 90, and we'll be Class I right after they rate us in June. So it's just one thing I forgot to mention, and I wanted to make sure you had.
And I just wanted to close out, to thank the chief and the department in particular for the patience in sort of getting this daylighted and working, starting to work towards implementation. And I want to thank Riva for her assistance, kind of helping us sort of work through the recommendations in a thoughtful way, work with the chief, to come up with an implementation schedule that really worked and to encapsulate it in a way that's very publicly accessible. And I think, hopefully, the council knows by now, I'm a big fan of having a plan and have some sort of organized approach to how we're, we're looking at these things. And so for me, you know, there had to be a rhyme and a reason to how, how we were approaching these different recommendations in the Standards of Coverage Study. This also helped us a lot with funding, because if we have some of these recommendations and plans, for example, the paramedic program, we were just, received an article the other day, the city of Lodi just started their paramedic program. They were able to receive a federal assistance for firefighters grant to send their firefighters to paramedic school. And so, you know, there, this, having a plan like this allows us then to be able to seek out those funding opportunities and being very strategic and thoughtful about it. So I'm really excited for the next steps in this process and to begin work on the facilities master plan. I think that will be a really instructive exercise as we start thinking about next steps. So thank you to the mayor and council, and we're happy to answer questions and, and hear public comment.
All right, very good, thank you. Good presentation. Ms. Sneddon.
Thank you, Mayor Ross. I have lots of comments, but I just, I'll save those and just ask the questions. It's always awkward because I want to say all these wonderful things, but we'll just get to the questions. So the plan's a little, a little bit older now, not, not so old. Were firewise communities in the plan, or how do those fit in with?
So, thank you for the question. Yes, firewise communities have been around for a number of years. The Standards of Coverage Study didn't get into specifically about firewise communities themselves, but it's addressed in the Community Risk Reduction Plan. That is an essential, essential part of the community's fire resilience, is to establish those. And, and as you know, since then, we've had a couple communities pop up as firewise communities. So it's definitely a trend, and our vegetation, wildland specialists are definitely working with communities to increase that.
Thank you. And then, is there a possibility we need more stations? Not just replacement stations, but more?
So, great question. Yes, that could be a possibility that comes out. What, what we really want to look at is response times. Again, what is the standard of care? How quickly do we need to get fire equipment at the scene? And now, again, it's the data that is at our fingertips, the GIS mapping that's at our fingertips. We, of course, you'd like to be able to just potentially move a station to capture it, but if you do need to add an additional station, that, that is absolutely a possibility.
So we're not precluding that that might come out of the study? That we're not saying just this many stations, we're saying we might need more?
Correct. Yeah, there's, there's nothing that says capped at eight. There's nothing in the study, the study that says that.
And then evacuation routes? Will those be in the community risk assessment part, or?
So that would be part of community risk. And you, you bring up a great point, because that's, that's our, all part of the research that goes into, to a true community risk reduction plan, is to look at evacuation routes in a major incident, whether, again, it's a flood, fire, or earthquake. So yes, that would be something that a community risk reduction person would be tasked with.
And then along those lines, the, you know, we say flood, fire, earthquake, and there's also debris flow, which is different than flood. So, and that impacts evacuation routes too, is that all part of it?
Yes, absolutely. And that was something that, that perhaps wasn't even on our radar before the monastic debris flow. And it wasn't the water, it was the debris that was the problem.
Yep. Thank, thank you. And then, this is just an off question, but do, do you think there might be interest in those older historic fire stations? Like, would people be interested in buying those as like a cool place to live, or an event space, or, like, is there a market for, for them?
So, thank you for that question. Actually, I've been to a number of older fire stations that have been repurposed as restaurants, private homes. In my mind, if Station Three wasn't something that we could, you know, renovate and use, it might be a perfect location for city personnel. Might be perfect for a smaller department that could move in and, because the apparatus floor is rather large, and I think kind of the sky's the limit on what we can do. It's actually a fairly large piece of property. Remember, you have to keep the exterior largely the same, but what you're using the interior for could change.
I think that's a really interesting idea, and I'm glad that'll be part of the whole look at, okay. And I completely support all these recommendations, so thank you.
Mr. Friedman.
Thank you. That was a, that was a great question about basically adaptive reuse of the, of the property. So, just a few, a few questions, and then I'll do some comments later as well. I agree, it's tough to not mix the two right now. On the housing, going from three to four, in the report, it says the, most of the stations, exception of one and maybe one or two others, they only can fit three right now, correct? So there would have to be upgrades to those facilities to get to four?
Yeah, thank, thank you for the question, Councilmember Friedman. When I got on the department, the fire stations were large dorms, and everyone had, everyone basically stayed in a, in one room. And, and fire stations have moved to separate bedrooms, separate accommodations for firefighters, because, you know, we really do need, and they're not big, they're just small bedrooms. All of our stations, with the exception of Station One, there are, they are only three bedrooms. So at minimum, before we move a fourth person into that, we would need to find a location within the facility for a fourth bedroom. I truly believe everyone should have their own. We shouldn't double up one, you know, the firefighters or the engineers or anything. I, I think that modern fire facilities, that's a norm, to have, have their own space and their own area.
Right. Thank you for the clarification. That's why this is so important, to get that plan going on, on capital investment. Most of my questions, you actually answered through the presentation, so these are just a couple follow-ups. Another issue, you, you got to it somewhat, and you and I have talked about this at length, chief. With taller, more dense, but also taller buildings now, because of changes in state law that allow developers for housing to go above the 60-foot limit, it used to be basically a cup, the granada, in most of our taller buildings, how, how is this preparing us for the reality that we're going to have 60, 70-foot buildings, but they're going to have people living in them, which is far different than, with the exception of the granada, our taller buildings? Is this something that we essentially need to do, and, and shifting to four is going to address that?
Thank you. Great question. You're absolutely right. There's, there's lateral spread and there's a vertical spread. And when, when you're dealing with a mid-rise or a high-rise, and you're putting people in those buildings, you are complicating what we call the life safety risk. Anytime you're dealing with multiple floors, that is an incredibly complex incident to fight, in fact, fire to fight. In fact, today, I, a fire website came up, and they had a large apartment complex in Manhattan that was on fire. And I was just looking at that going, oh my. The number of personnel that are needed to, it's, it's not just a fire on the sixth floor. You've got to think of the personnel needed to get equipment to the sixth floor, to actually fight the fire, to take care of the firefighters, because, you know, moving up, and by the way, when there's an incident, we don't take elevators. We're taking the stairs, that's the safe place to go. So whenever you have an incident in a high-rise, it's a much larger response, because the, the logistics required to put that fire out are complex. So that goes back to exactly why I said I think the downtown area with the vertical development that's going on, protecting the downtown with just a three-person engine and a four-person truck, we're kind of already past that. And we really need to think about augmenting the staffing downtown. And, and again, when I told people, you know, I saw three tower cranes at one time, that, that tells me that we- that tells me that we are increasing to a significant extent the fire protection requirements. And then think, keep in mind, it's not just the personnel, but it's the fire flow requirements. How do we get water to the sixth floor? What's our our water system like? We'd have personnel dedicated to just water supply on the incident. So whenever we have, you know, there's two story residences, but when you start getting into your mid rise, that's where we start really augmenting a significant number of fire apparatus to handle that incident.
Thank you for that. And I'm glad we're having this discussion now before I don't heard last week, you think five years from now. It's important because there there is no state guidance. I mean, there is, but there's no state guidance of you're going to build all this, here's resources to for you to consider all this. We're kind of having to do this in a sense on our own in terms of planning and going ahead. There'll be resources there, but it's not something that we're really getting this the opportunities from the state to really look at that in a way we comprehensively need to. On recommendation nine, this might be maybe for Ms. McAdoo or Chief, but how what is the plan to to implement that in terms of timelines and then reach out with the different stakeholders in terms of not our waterfront department, but also Cottage and maybe even the county?
Yeah, I mean, I think the the community risk reduction plan, I mean, as we kind of saw with the climate adaptation plan, that is part of the community risk reduction plan. And so I think we're going to look comprehensively at how, you know, what we already have within our city in terms of documents, you know, we have the wildfire, you know, prevention plan, we have climate adaptation plan. So I think there's, you know, taking a look at what we're already working on within the city and then figuring out how do we create and sort of compile those different things? I think the biggest piece is going to be the community outreach piece. How do we work with other organizations outside of the city organization like Cottage, you know, like City College, all of those in terms of, you know, how do we incorporate those those facilities into our planning as well?
And is this is this an item, all of this, but in particular, this one, since we're going to have to have additional resources, but it's extremely important for next week's discussion at the strategic plan that we have is to give a little direction on on that or is this something that would we could bring up next week or is there a different process that would bring up?
Yeah, no, I think that would be a great time to bring it up. The standards of coverage study is incorporated into the strategic plan for next week, but we can talk about the community risk reduction plan as part of that discussion next week as well.
And then my my last question, it's a little more technical. So the report, as I was reading it, was basically finalized in 2023. And it said that because of COVID, that coming out of COVID, the data was skewed in 2020, 2021. But then it part of it said that there was a supplemental information or data was was added in there. Can you just explain a little more how that was added? So we have current data from 2024 and this year. And if that data in 2024 and 2025 affected any of the the nine recommendations, I just want to see from when the plan was written, what's the the newest data and is it incorporated in there?
Sure. Thank you for the question. So so the standards of coverage study was completed in 2023 and it looked at data up through 2022. So part of 2022, but really largely 2021 and earlier. The performance analysis that was done in April of '24 really looked more comprehensively at 2023. Really, the recommendations that came out of the SOC are not so much response time related. And and it would be fair to say that that all of the data, as far as response times, are really stale. Moving forward, what we'll be doing is, especially with this feasibility study and station location study, is that we will be using the data from our police department dispatch center. We have a line of demarcation when we went to the regional center on June 3. And then we'll pull the data from June 3 on and be able to the consultants will merge that data and be able to come up with what they hope is five years of data. And so with that line of demarcation, they're going to be able to say, OK, now it's a regional center, you have more apparatus, you have closest available, you know, hopefully the response times will go down. So to to answer your question, the response time data is stale, but it really didn't affect the recommendations that came out.
Perfect. Thank you. I'll reserve my comments for later.
Mr. Jordan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tell me if I was dozing, but the the pilot program you talk about initially putting a quick response team with paramedics in the downtown because you'd get a a an area of coverage there that encompasses most recalls. Is that a budget request that's going to come or how does how how is that idea moving forward?
Great question.
So I think, as was mapped out in the presentation, the first step is to request the EMS administrator position because we want to make sure that in order to have a paramedic program, you have to have someone who can do the QA and QI work.
I heard that part.
Yes. So so that that would probably come this as part of this fiscal year budget. We just sort of work towards that and then start to think about financing and funding for the quick response.
And I didn't hear my favorite stat from chat with you. And so how many munis, what's percentage of munis in California that have paramedics on their fire engines?
So thank you for that question. It's actually easier for me to say who doesn't.
Right.
And around us, it's Santa Barbara City, Long Poak and Santa Maria. But I can tell you that definitively from San Francisco to the California Mexico border, it's probably three. All of the Bay Area departments have medics, Salinas does, Paso Robles, San Luis Obispo, Santa Barbara County, Montecito, Carpinteria, Ventura City, Ventura County, LA City, LA County, all the beach communities, all the way down, Encinitas, Carlsbad, every department has a paramedic program. We are in the lowest 5% to 10% of the fire departments in the state.
And it's just to stay out of the drama of the whole ambulance thing last year. It's not about having ambulances, it's actually having embedded paramedics on the engine crews with your other crew members, right?
That is correct.
Because generally, you're you're the first person there, at least in our situation, right? You're you're the first people there.
That's correct.
And the importance of that is, so help me with that. So just so, I don't know if people realize that, it was a awakening to me, but the the difference between what you have on the engine right now and what you don't is as simple as almost you can give basic, you're going to you're going to rephrase this because this is just me explaining it. You can get basic aid, but let's say if you have to hook up an IV bag to administer drugs, you cannot do that in the field. Is that correct?
That is correct. So the level of training for an EMT or basic life support is again about 200 hours of training and they can administer oxygen, they can give Narcan or naloxone, and they can give a medication called glucagon, which is for diabetes. That's the basic life support, what we call scope of practice. Paramedics, depending on what county, what state you're in, are administered are allowed to administer anywhere between 20 and 30 medications, which include medications for chest pain, shortness of breath, pain management. It it is a advanced level of care with advanced level practitioners. Your IVs, correct. EMTs cannot start IVs.
But there's even a difference in what you said, because I've been on a ride along for for this for this very event. Say Narcan, when this I just harp on shilling for for moving forward to getting to a point where we're outfitting the same as everybody else is. You can only do that nasally, right? So there's and there's and and I'll just tell my story without telling my story. There's a difference between administering nasally and the ability to save somebody's life versus hooking up an IV and getting that right into their bloodstream with a bag. And the two results can vary, right? One, one can bring somebody back to life while the nasal one may not. Does that sound right?
Correct. What what you're really saying, and I'll expand it to all medications, certain medications are given certain ways, but medications can be given multiple ways and their onset of action can be different depending on how the medication is administered. So whether it's administered orally, whether it's administered, you know, nasally or whether it's administered IV, there's different onsets of action. Narcan is actually, I used to tell people, you can literally, you know, throw a dart at the person and administer Narcan because it's it can be administered anyway. You know, like you said, the nose, IV, IM, et cetera. But more importantly, there's other advanced medications that have to be administered IV and can only be administered by a paramedic.
I guess the point I'm trying to make is the upgrade to paramedic has consequences on people's lives, literally, because of the limitations we choose to live with by only having an EMT on the rig versus a paramedic. And that's just one experience that I've had, just to see that on the street. So obviously, I think I'm just shilling for this over and over again, but I think we need to get to looking at that plan as soon as possible because literally every day there's a consequence or could be a consequence that won't be there after we accomplish that.
And I I think in certain and similarly, and I have, you know, just given the state of ambulance response times in the county, it's a huge priority for me in terms of sort of customer service. I think that's what the chief and I talked about in saving lives, in terms of being able to actually improve service levels to our community. And, you know, for every minute that there's a delayed response on, you know, it damages people's health outcomes. And so I think that, you know, the sooner we can get a paramedic on the scene, providing whatever, whether it's someone's having a stroke and you can get them the anti-stroke medication, they're having a heart attack, you can start administering, you know, there's just so many ways that getting someone on scene who can provide advanced life support is critical to to saving lives.
Ms. Sneddon. Oh, by the way, are there any other questions because we're going to go to comments? OK, go right ahead, Ms. Sneddon.
Do we have any public comment before we?
Do we have any? We don't be, I think the clerks were doing it online.
No, Mr. Mayor. OK, so I can go to comments? OK, thank you.
Go crazy.
I'm going to go crazy. We needed this so badly and we need it, we need it implemented. Thank you for bringing this forward. And I know in fire in general is very able to make do with very little and be very heroic about it, actually. So the the fact of coming forward with a needs assessment, it says it must be really critical need. So I'm really happy this is coming forward. I'm thinking about, you know, with with Measure C and and all the the many times we said about the police station being totally unacceptable because it was not seismically sound and did not have suitable living conditions, changing conditions. And and these are stations where firefighters are living overnight, spending time. So this is very, very high priority. And I think the ask for funding is it's it's justifiable in Measure C, justifiable in Measure I, which was essential services, justifiable in general fund. I mean, we we need to be able to have the funding to make this happen. I think there's like no, no question about that, especially seismically unsound. I mean, that's when we all the same arguments with the police station, we have an earthquake disaster and the very people who we are hoping will come and rescue us are themselves at risk. So unacceptable to be in seismically unsound buildings. I just want to make a comment on behalf of District Four, the Riviera and Eucalyptus Hill and Mission Canyon is so grateful for the quicker response times with the regional dispatch. It really, really, truly makes a difference and to be able to see all the different response times. With that, the the Station Seven has to be handled. I mean, that is going to be a big loss where it's rebuilt and what happens with that. So these are really high priorities. So just some notes on yes to the recommendation one, the paramedic squad at Station One and Engine 71 at Correo and just the four person, and it says and or paramedic, but yes, paramedic. I mean, for all the reasons we already we already talked about here. I think, yes, equipment replacement has been good. Is it as fast as it could be? That was that was quite a long time for the ladder truck and to be looking ahead and it takes a long time to get those. So please, like, put in the this is the the chance to be putting in there all those needs that are that are going to need to happen. I think the community, we can do community outreach. I think it's important because all you're going to get is overwhelming community support for public safety and for this for this happening. So yes, to all of that. I do want to say a little note about, you've heard me speak on this before, but the multilingual education, public information citywide. And I'll I'll just give my little story about Liliana Encinas. And when I first met her was over 20 years ago and and we just happened to cross paths along the way. And we first both started off at Star King Parent Child Workshop. And that workshop did not have bilingual translation, even though they had a Spanish speaking director, all of the board documents, all of the outreach material. Liliana was the one through public safety, through her sort of medical background a little bit, was like, we need to have this for the safety of this preschool community. Then we moved on to Peabody Charter School, same thing, the largest largest elementary school in in the city, over half Spanish speaking. Liliana looked around and said, why why aren't our materials in in Spanish? This is over half of our population in our school and parents. And so she started that bilingual, really pressed for it, every newsletter, every everything out to the community, and it made a difference in the safety and the connectedness of the community. And then, you know, time moves on, we're we both wound up at the city at about the same time. And it was very clear at the time in the city, we did not have Spanish translation during the debris flow and during the times when needed to be letting people know about evacuations. And Liliana, with all that she's done in building the connections of the community so that you're you have that ahead of the disaster, you have that connection built and that information pathway. So I mean, I I can't say enough support for why we would need this public information citywide, needing to be bilingual, needing to be building those those connections for the safety of everyone and the community building ahead of disasters. It's just there's so many types of disasters could happen. And I think that that is, I mean, yes, absolutely, yes. Records management, I wouldn't have known that was a high need, but OK. Put that one in there. And then the increasing of the staffing by one per apparatus to make it more efficient, yes. I mean, all of these things are yes, yes. We absolutely need this. I I think we can justify it, like I say, with Measure C, Measure I and general fund, whatever it takes, because I think this is, we're behind on this. And we got so far ahead with the police station and that this can't this can't lag far behind from that. So and just congratulations, the class one rating, wow, and thank you. And I'm happy to move the recommendations A, B, C and D.
Mr. Friedman.
All right. I think it was exactly 10 hours ago that Chief Mahills, myself, Councilmember Sneddon, the mayor and Ms. McAdoo started our day together. And now we're ending. How how great to to bring in full circle. And what I told you was we were in a lot more wide awake, happier mood there, but it's been a long day.
I patted you on the back.
It's a great way to start the day and a great way to end the day, actually, so.
I patted you on the back and said this is going to be an all fire department day.
Yes, it definitely was. And I think it's very appropriate that on the day that the Regional Fire Communications Center ribbon cutting took place on the same day of this, because that that was part of one of the one of the key recommendations in the report, actually, was to to do that. And then, as you said, because of that, we're going to be able to be status one. So it's just a great, a great day to take the next step forward in protection of our city through the fire department. So thanks for spending your day with with us. Before I start, I I don't like to mention it too much, but it was something that was said about just the increase in services that this will provide and every second counts. And you mentioned heart attack over there. And I know our guys, they I wouldn't be here if it wasn't for our firefighters and some of them in the room. And so it it doesn't usually catch me, but every now and then I get a little emotional because of that. But I just want to say thank you to to our guys and 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 all just our women and and in the department, just our department. Because you're there for the entire city and this will ensure that others will get the services in time because we can always improve and it will lead to better outcomes for for all all of Santa Barbara in the future by implementing this plan going forward. So I'm rather than going through each one, I'm supportive of implementing the entire plan, but I know that it has to be methodical. We're going to have a lot, there's a lot of steps to doing it. I really appreciate the priorities. I really appreciate the priorities that you all came up with. It did surprise me that the administrative position was your biggest ask, but it makes sense when you explained it through there on that. And then also, the facilities master plan that we need to go forward because we can't move forward until we understand all of that. So definitely allocating that funding today is an important step forward. And then the discussion of doing this now, it's critical because of what we were talking about earlier, that as we get not only more dense but taller buildings, it's a completely different type of protection services that are needed and a lot more resources. And we haven't had it before, so we can look to other areas, but it's something we're going to have to develop to make it uniquely Santa Barbara, but also make sure that we have the backup coverages to the other stations that aren't with the higher-rise buildings. So it's an important day moving forward. Happy to, I'll second the motion and look forward to continuing this discussion and district planning next week. So, thank you.
Ms. Santa Maria.
Thank you, Mayor Rouse. I'll keep it brief since we've been here for quite a while now, but I'd be remiss if I didn't thank you, chief, and to all of our firefighters here in the room and the rest of the staff who make this possible. I really do feel like this is a both very reasonable and necessary investment. I am fully in support of all of the recommendations made, and I would encourage you to give us feedback on what you believe should be the prioritization. If you think certain things need to be addressed before others, you know your department best. I would love that feedback so that we can do this. You know, I don't want certain things to hold up others. So if there's things we can get done first, let's go ahead and do that. I think the addition of paramedics to the team is very much a no-brainer, and I'm really glad that you're, all of this work is helping us catch up with all of the other agencies that already do this. And really, I very much want to ensure that we address the issue of accommodations for our firefighters. I mean, it's, like you said, chief, I mean, if it's a standard in modern facilities for firefighters, I do think we should keep that standard up, especially considering that so many of our firefighters don't really live near here. I mean, some fortunately do, but many don't. And so the issue of commuting and not being able to afford to live where you work is already there, and so anything we can do to mitigate that, I think it's a very worthwhile investment. You know, as our firefighting department, you take care of our city, and I think our city should be taking care of you. So, thank you.
Mr. Jordan.
Just agree with everybody else, I say. I have to note, first time in a long time, Councilmember Santa Maria and I had two moments of agreement today. So, and I am keeping track and building upon that, okay? Yeah. But like all your points, I think one of the points you made to me was like my typical, well, let's go take care of those two stations right now, was we don't even know that all the others will stay where they're going to stay based on where they have to call to, because, you know, it's been 100 and whatever years that they've been being laid out, and then the town's grown around them. So, but I think definitely overdue. I'll call it a no-brainer, too. It's just like having better medical capability on the first responder unit to always, maybe not always, but 90-some percent of the time to arrive on the scene of a medical need is just got to be a no-brainer. You know, you hear me say, and you hear other people say, too, we bat well above our batting average for everything else in this town, museums, medical, everything. We should not be this far behind on medical capabilities on first-arriving units out in the community. That should be fixed. So, happy to help with that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Gutierrez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to thank all you all for your service. I, too, have gone on ride-alongs, and I've seen you all in action. And yeah, I think this is well overdue. I was surprised in my last ride-along to learn that Fire Station Five used to be like a farmhouse. You can still kind of see it. So, yeah, upgrades are desperately needed, so thank you.
All righty, we'll break out the marshmallows. I think we're about ready to sing kumbaya. Have we got a first and a second? Anybody understand the motion?
And I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor and Council, remind me who the second was? Very good. We have a motion by Councilmember Sneddon, seconded by Mayor Portem Friedman for the staff recommendation. Please go ahead and vote. Oh, I apologize. Let me redo the attendance because Ms. Harmon has left the meeting. Hold on one sec. Hold, please.
The information age. I love it.
What's showing here will just be the attendance, so hold on one second. Okay, now go ahead and vote for the fire item, please. It disappeared. Let me try. Hold your thoughts, I know.
You could just ask us, you know.
I could. Okay. Do you have it?
Pass you hands, we've all present. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. And with that, Mr. Gutierrez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to give my respects to a few people who passed away recently. One of them was a local photographer who, I'm sure we've all seen him. He participated in a lot of events. His name was Kenji Fukudome. He passed away, and he's going to be very much missed in the art community. And secondly, Tatum Tumblin passed away in a skateboarding accident on Thanksgiving Day, and that one hit very close to home to me, literally, because he was my neighbor. And the whole neighborhood, the whole community is really at a loss because of it. So I just want to end this meeting in their honor, if that's all right, Mr. Mayor.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Mr. Freeman.
Thank you, Councilmember Gutierrez for recognizing him. I know that was a big loss in the community, for both, for both. Just wanted to, on some of the events, attended Sustainability and the Sustainability Holiday Open House. I know some of my colleagues were there. That was a great event, and it just shows, it highlights the work that they do over the course of the year. The Independent Local Heroes Luncheon, always a great event for people doing so much for our community and really inspiring, and I'm glad it takes place this time of year, just to kick us off into the holidays. Attended the retirement party for our own Sarah Connect, well-deserved, and you had a lot of love and support there. It was a great event. Saw a lot of faces from the past that were there. The Sterns Wharf Tree Lighting, some of my colleagues were there. That was a great way to kick off the holiday season down at Sterns Wharf the following morning, kicked off the Alzheimer's Walk, and thanking to that organization for raising funding for families and for treatment. And then also, we mentioned earlier, the Regional Fire Communications Center ribbon cutting this morning, and a great way to start the day and end the day with the fire department. Thanks.
Ms. Sneddon.
Thank you, Mayor Rouse, and thank you, Councilmember Gutierrez, for your acknowledgements. Let's see, we had HLC this week. They were looking at single-family development streamlining amendments. Those went through to move on to council or maybe to ordinance. There was the final approval of 633 East Cabrillo. That was a Hilton Beach front. That was approved. Also saw the plans for the Music Academy of the West Building on State Street for concept review, and that is going to be, all the HLC, I'm just reporting, HLC all said, what a welcome addition that's going to be to downtown and just incredible inside, and what a resource. And let's see. Sorry, Joe Shelton also had presented a project. And then the native plant pilot program went through HLC in partnership with the Santa Barbara Botanic Gardens, and those have been now planted on State Street. So thank you to the Friends of State Street, the Santa Barbara Botanic Gardens for putting those in as a pilot. Also attended the Toba Sister City event with Councilmember Gutierrez as well. And then Ms. Connect's retirement party, that was the city glitterati for generations. Yeah. Sustainability Committee, we heard the same presentation we heard today. CCRB, yeah, sorry, we were Zoom bombed at CCRB, so I just had a momentary lapse there in my head. Okay, then Sterns Wharf and downtown Santa Barbara Tree Lighting. And then I was a speaker at the Upper East Association Annual Meeting, and then this morning, the ribbon cutting of the County EOC, which is really quite a facility. So, thank you.
Mr. Jordan.
So I just wanted to jump on the Sustainability Holiday Open House. If you haven't been, and assuming we've all been, that's probably my third, at least in a row since COVID. That is just, has become a model event for what a department open house should look like, having nothing, well, no, it's probably not true. They probably snuck a couple of things in. I had to leave my car keys when I walked, no, not really. But they probably stuck, but having nothing literally to do with the daily nuts and bolts of their department, other than lure people in with a social event just to become familiar with the normal people and the normal function in their own setting that help run the city. And somebody needs to bottle that and do that for no reason in other times of the year in other city departments like that. It's probably a little bit of, a lot of bit of Aleia running that show and being the person she is, but literally, I just, I walk away from that every year and go, this is what a department should look like engaging with the city. For, they've already got their holiday season booked once, so they've got it, but other departments need to find a reason to do that, and we should find a way to support that, to support that happening. I can't think of a better way to introduce people who have never been in a city department and their children to the city functioning than what I see there. So that's my story, and I'm sticking to it.
Mr. Gutierrez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I attended a couple of tree lightings with my colleagues. Attended the Paseo Nuevo Tree Lighting with the mayor and the Harbor Tree Lighting with Eric Friedman and the Downtown Tree Lighting with my colleagues Wendy and Kristen. And Darla B was DJing two of those tree lightings, and John Palminteri was at all three of them doing his thing. And I attended the La Arcata Christmas Walk, the Sip and Stroll at the Mission, the Sip and Stroll at the Presidio, the Trapeze Holiday Party. Let's see, there's a lot of stuff I went to. The Move Christmas Party, the Posadas on Milpas, the Libero Light Up a Life, and Our Lady of Sorrows honoring of the Virgin of Guadalupe procession. So, yeah.
All right. And with that, I believe we're adjourned till next week. Gutierrez.